Okay, we're going to open the planning board meeting for June 10th at 7:30 PM. The first on the docket is MacArthur Ave., it's a continuation for a one-lot subdivision.
Could you just please remind everyone that that meeting is being audio and videotaped?
Oh, yes, the meeting is being audio and videotaped. All right. We have someone here from MacArthur Ave.? Oh, okay. I don't recognize you as the applicant for this.
It's all about the applicant.
No, okay.
Agent Fork, I guess you'd call it. Um, well, I don't know where to start, really. We're trying to get a buildable lot on MacArthur Ave. that is currently a private road, according to chapter 81 FF of chapter 41 or section 81 FF of chapter 41. Now, is Gino coming tonight?
Gino is not coming tonight.
Okay. Well, Gino had made some comments, which I think you've all seen, which basically says to me that in order to get a buildable lot there, we need something acceptable through the planning board. Okay. And basically, I guess I'm here to say, what do we need to do that would make it acceptable to you?
Frontage.
Well-
That's what's required, is frontage. You know, we're willing to say, okay, just build the minimum frontage that you require, but it's got to have frontage, or it's not a lot.
Well, okay, so we build a road that has frontage. Um, I mean, based on the law, I think the law states that, you know, the planning board can waive even strict policies based on their current rules and regulations. But what I'm saying to you is, okay, we got a lot here that's probably got, I don't know exactly, but I do have plans here, over 300, around 300-foot frontage. Required frontage in that area is 150.
Mm-hmm.
Do we build the road? I mean, is this something our engineer could work with Tom on, so it is the safest it possibly could be?
Yeah, well, I think that we were pretty clear that we said that all you need is what's required. So, if you can get 150 feet of frontage constructed, you've got a lot.
Well, his three plans then, that show, I don't know if they show, I'll show, 150 feet of frontage. One shows, and I wish Paul was here tonight, that could kind of help me with this, but he's not. Um, there's two copies here, and three sets.
Am I correct in my recollection?
Is this something that maybe Mr. Houston could review?
Yeah.
And state to us which way he thinks the town should go, or would want to go?
Yeah, he could make a recommendation to us, yeah.
Okay. Then that's what we need. I mean, if they're not going to allow a private road for one lot, and keeping in mind, again, we just want to really make enough road frontage to satisfy the board.
Just a pause there, John.
Right here. Comes off of Lake Shore, right here. And it's only about 40 feet. The driveway is definitely going over in here.
I can see that.
And the road, you know, has to go 150 foot in front of the lot.
Right.
I guess that, so it's about 190 feet, give or take a few feet.
There's no road there now?
Well, there's a cat road there.
And there's no room for cul-de-sac?
Paper road.
Paper road, cat road, it's a private road, according to the section in the chapter. But, you know, you can drive up and down it, not in the winter, because they don't plow it. But I could drive down it now with my car.
Is there room for cul-de-sac, or a turnaround?
We could have a hammerhead. We could have a hammerhead using part of their property, yeah. Which would, if it's extended, it would go away.
Yeah, you could do it right there.
Yeah.
Well, this is a deep square, right here.
Yeah, you could keep it right off the front to turn around.
You could actually do a turnaround, right here, too. See how it extends in? So, I mean, we, I guess we don't really know where to go, other than Steve says now you want the frontage. So, we'll do the frontage. We got drainage pits down the front. Again, it's only going to be one lot, none of these other lots up in here can be built on.
Well, today. You never know what anyone's going to do in the future.
All these houses front on other roads. This fronts on Hunter. This is the only lot up here right now, other than the three, two or three lots, or four lots possibly, at the end of Hunter, which somebody had proposed to try to build, but according to my engineer, it's very steep, and it goes down to the lake, so he doesn't-
If you own that cat path, you could have an estate lot.
We don't own it.
I know, I know.
And my understanding is it can't, cannot be abandoned based on when it was approved. I know, I mean, really, it's, it would be perfect for that. But all the people that live in that area, under this plan, have a right to use that. Go up and down it, walk up and down it, go through it, around it, whatever, well, not really around it, but through it. So-
So you get a 30-foot grade change in about 200 feet.
Yeah, the greatest, the greatest-
Is that even allowed, Tom?
Basically, not acceptable to the town.
Is a grade change of that elevation allowed? It's about a 28-foot grade change over a couple hundred feet. The road, we have to conform to certain-
That'd be 13 or 14 percent, no.
Okay, so that wouldn't comply?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the challenge here.
Yeah, it's always been the challenge.
That may be something that there, in order to construct the required frontage, there might have to be a waiver on slope, because if you've been out-
Just a moment.
Okay.
There's no amplification in this room. If you want to come forward, you can, but there's, we don't have any amplification.
I can speak up. Having been out there, it goes, I won't say vertical, but it's very steep for its entire length, till it gets about halfway through that lot, and then it levels off. So, you couldn't have a situation where you're continuously cutting and ended up very deep in the ground. We'd have to kind of balance that against the reality of what the topo is out there.
Yeah.
But other than that, a roadway can be constructed for the requisite frontage.
Might be a little steeper than what the town would like, but, you know, if that's what's required, that's what's required.
Exactly.
Is the path owned by the town?
Uh, no, this is an old subdivision, this is-
Who owns the entrance?
Oh, this is a subdivision road that was designed and never accepted.
1945.
So the town owned it after it's constructed?
Right.
But right now, is it owned by the lots on either side, like, so the lots that-
No, no.
No?
No. That's, that's where somebody made a, well, according to one of the gentlemen up here, they gave this guy half the frontage over here, so he could put an addition on his property and be legal to a court of law.
Years ago, the people on either side of the right-of-way owned up to the middle of the right-of-way, that's what was done before, but if this was just a subdivision and it was abandoned, would the town take ownership of that?
I don't know if the town ever took ownership of it.
Yeah, I don't think the town would take ownership. I think if-
It's a huge subdivision.
If a private way is abandoned, then the abutting owners obtain ownership to the center, or reassert ownership to the center. An abandoned subdivision street, I'm not entirely sure about.
Which is what this is, correct?
I, my thought would be it's a private way. So, probably, if the, if all owners were to abandon their interest in it, it would revert to the abutters. But it sounds like the way it was structured, it would be difficult to ever determine if all the owners relinquish their rights in it. So I think you have to consider it a private way at the moment.
Well, under the, under the law, it's a private way, yes.
Correct, yeah.
And it cannot be abandoned, according to what I've written into it. And, so, I don't know how you can really say the owners that abut it own halfway to the road.
But they don't, they don't now.
You know, in the cases he's talking about, there is a lot of that that happens, where roads are abandoned, or the town takes them over, but the town owns them, deeds over half to each side. But this one's never had that.
Well, there are instances that I've known of, where it reverts to the ownership of the people on either side of the road, reverts to the center line of the roadway.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Seen it happen.
I've seen it happen, too, but I've also seen many private drives in cases like this.
Yeah, true.
And I've seen common driveways in cases like this.
What is the title search show? Who owns it?
Um-
Did you search the title?
Uh, Gino did.
I think Gino did, it's part of his opinion here.
I don't know who owns it.
It's got to be owned by somebody.
Yeah, I think the guy's probably deceased. William, right here. Subdivision land owned by William Schulzmeier, has shown in the plan, this is Lamp Court, too. Um, and you can see it was, subdivision was made in 1945. And, did you see Gino's comments?
I was just looking at them now.
Oh, okay. This is really basically it. Now, he states three case laws there, there's a million case laws out there with land like this. I don't know, that's why I wanted to talk to him, if he was here, but he's not here.
John, we've also explored providing access to that lot.
Just a moment, could you wait until the board's finished with their questions here?
From the other direction, and that doesn't work either. So, we put a lot of time in looking at how to get at this, and it does appear that if you're going to access this lot, it's got to come up that way.
Well, it's the shortest way, and it really gets steep at the other end. Now, it's pretty level up by Hunter.
Yeah.
But then, you know, coming down MacArthur, it gets very steep, then levels off, and then goes down again.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, just, we also had Bob McGee in to take a look at the construction of the slope, and suggest that as it comes down, you try to provide a little bit of a flat spot to slow the plow down before it goes whipping out on the other street there.
You do have a slight leveling area at the base, don't you?
At the very bottom?
At the bottom, yeah. So you don't go shooting right across the road at the bottom?
There's somewhat of a level area there.
Not to get into driveways, but have you seen driveways on Crescent Ave?
Yeah, well-
I mean, there's a heck of a lot more slope to those, but I don't think that there's really, there's really not, you know, it comes right down. I mean, could it be graded such?
Well, yeah, I mean, what percent slope do you have at the bottom there? It's still not a 5 percent slope.
Yeah, I'm not the engineer.
Oh, okay.
No, it's a 30-foot grade change over 200 feet.
But most of it's up in the upper part, right?
No, it's pretty steady, it's right up.
Yeah, it's pretty steady going up.
That could be graded to show a flat part as you get to the street.
Yeah, it's going to have to be graded, you have it a little bit flat up.
Didn't we review one drawing that showed that? I remember a drawing that showed-
I know we've talked about it before.
Yeah.
He had a plan profile brought in.
Where does this exit from, the street? Where does it dump onto?
Which street are you talking about?
Well, if this continued on, where does this end?
Close to Hunter. This is Hunter Ave.
So it connects to Hunter?
Yes.
Where does Hunter end?
Hunter ends right here.
Someplace in there?
It ends pretty, it's very flat.
The other end, right? The other end of Hunter.
Yeah, it's, no, no, it's this end, right here. That's where it ends. Now, this doesn't show MacArthur, actually, it's, MacArthur continues down here, but all these lots are built on, too, whether they're on Populatic Lake, or on Hollow.
And they all access it through Hunter?
Well, Hunter and then Hollow. There's another street up here, Hollow. If you have a street map, I could show you that.
Is this all privately-owned land on both sides?
Yes.
If it was ever connected, so you'd have privately-owned lots on either side?
I guess I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, what if the road was constructed right away to Hunter?
Wow.
Does that open up lots on either side, or at least?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
They all access it from the other side?
Yeah, the houses down here are built on. All right, there's one house here, and he owns this lot, this lot, and this lot. And there's another house here, and he owns this lot, this lot, and say this lot. Now, there is one empty area right across the street from Hunter, but that's very steep to the lake. But this gentleman here has frontage on Hunter, and this is all his land here, and he could not even develop this because of the build factor, and develop another lot in here. That was proven.
Okay.
So, realistically, this is the only lot, and, I mean, it's really a conforming lot now, but without street frontage. I mean, if you look at this, and can you imagine if none of these were built on, and they were, let's just say, they were owned by different people all the way? You know, could they be allowed to develop a road and build on these small lots? You know, over the years, all the people have bought side-by-side lots, and-
Is that led you going up there, too, John?
No, I think it's all sandy gravel. It's been noted to be like that, up in that whole area. I used to live on Crescent Ave myself, and it was all sand. But, where was I getting that?
So you realize pretty much, if you had to construct the road to the town standards, it pretty much negates the value of the lot?
Well, I don't think it has to be, yes, but I don't think it has to be constructed right to the town's standards.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying if you did and constructed that, it seems like-
We probably couldn't comply, or today's.
And the cost would just obliterate the value of the lot. Just a guess.
Well, what standard are you talking about? Are you talking about the slope standard?
Yeah, they, the-
I need the engineer.
The standards that it wouldn't comply with, the horizontal grade along the, the grade along the profile, grade line, the horizontal curvature, the width of the right-of-way, among other things. So it's just not, it could not be made a currently compliant street. But it can be a street serviceable for one lot.
See, see, this is Hunter Ave. here. Here's the lot in question here. These are the lots over here that possibly, there's like two or three or four together, that potentially could have a house on it, but this is pretty level all up in here, so if these people needed to design a road up in here, I mean, I normally would before the board many years ago, and we had, actually, back in 92, this was approved for a road coming up from this way, back in 1992, but it lapsed and he sold the piece off, and, you know, now there's somebody new that owns it.
So basically, with the cost of $500 a foot to build a road, it's not worth building a road to get a lot that's going to have no value?
Well, she wants to put a house in there, so she would, but, you know, again, whatever the acceptable standards will be to the town, is what we're going to do. Now, we proposed, and I don't know what, I didn't get these new things from the DPW or the Highway Department, his comments, but he had, the very first original meeting, he didn't want to see a road put in here. He'd rather see a private road, where the town doesn't have to maintain it at all, just up to access into the lot for a driveway.
Do we have any comments from Bob McGee here?
I don't think so.
No?
I was referring to his verbal comments when he was here.
Oh, okay.
That was, I think that was Noel Wetter from Butch Vito.
No, this is not right. It's not right. You know, that was from Butch Vito. That's from Butch Vito, it was not a lawyer, it was inside the-
All right, the conversation goes in this direction.
Okay, very good.
What I want to make sure, we're giving clear direction, because I'm hearing us ask for at least three different things. So I'm not clear on what we're asking for. I hear, in part of Gino's review, that we're not entitled to issue a building permit until the road is either fully constructed, or at least constructed to a point where it's safe, and the remaining construction is guaranteed with some form of security. So I'm hearing that's all the way from Hunter down to Lake Shore. That's how I interpret that.
Oh, I don't, I don't interpret that, because if we, if we state that we needed a certain distance, that's the distance that we're stating has to be constructed.
So that's the other thing, are we just asking for frontage, or are we asking for a fully constructed road? Because those are two different things.
Yes, they are.
So one says a fully constructed road, that's Gino's comment. We're talking about frontage, which may then be some portion of that fully constructed road, and then we're also talking about a street that could be serviceable for one lot. So those could each be interpreted three different ways, in terms of how he engineers and spends his money as his next step. I want to make sure we're clear on what direction we're giving him, so he's not spending three times the money trying to get the right answer to us.
That's a good point.
Not only that-
My initial meeting, I didn't interpret it that way, but you're correct, you could interpret it-
We did something similar on Toils End Road off of Grove Street, if you remember, that we allowed that other subdivision to go in, even though the entrance off of Grove Street onto Toils End Road was not fully constructed to this town's standards. But, it was always anticipated, and I think it's in the decision, that any further development along that roadway has to bring the entrance into full compliance.
Is this in a zone with 150-foot frontage required?
Yes.
So basically, even though the lot has 300-foot of frontage, you'd have to build 150 feet of roadway to get the frontage, and then the egress up to there from Lake Shore is probably another 200, so you're talking 350-foot road.
Right, that's one point what we were talking about. And then there was Bob McGee's comments at one point, which I remember, which I agree with, he didn't necessarily want to see this as a fully constructed through-pass road. He loved the idea of grading it off a bit, so that we could make it ready to receive a water loop, that he wanted, so he didn't have his dead ends down there on his water tees. But that really, it was only to be a service road, not anything that he necessarily felt that he wanted as a maintainable, fully constructed road. So I think we have a bunch, you know, it's not as simple as just give us the frontage and you've got a, you know, you've got a project here.
There's also precedent, you have to be very careful about precedent.
Where's the water going to loop? Is the water going to loop back here, Hunter?
Yes, it's my, it's my memory of it, yeah.
So there's a viable reason for the town, that benefits the town, if this was even partly constructed or graded?
At least graded out, yeah, at least graded out.
Can't see anybody building a road, you don't have that much money.
My belief, yes. My belief as to where we are relates to the same decision that we make with an AMR plan, and that relates back to the definition of what is a subdivision. And it's not a subdivision if the lot has frontage on a way. It's either a public way, but if it's not a public way, which it's not, it's a private way, therefore, the planning board has to make a determination that the way as it currently exists is adequate for the intended use. That means vehicular access and utilities. So what the gentleman is really asking the planning board to do, is to make a determination that MacArthur Ave. in front of this lot is adequate for the intended use, which is a single-family house. In order to reach that position, the planning board is going to have to see a roadway constructed in front of that lot. The standard that this board has always used, although not defined in law, but the consistent standard that this board has used, is to require that roadway to be constructed for a length at least equal to the frontage required in the district. So I think the direction the board is giving is that if the gentleman comes in with a plan, that comes as close as possible to our street standards, and it extends for a distance of 150 feet in front of his lot, that would be sufficient cause for the planning board to reach a decision that the way is adequate for the intended use. At that point, he could pull a building permit.
There is a precedent for constructing a roadway that's not up to the full town standards. That's a small roadway, Evans, Evans Lane, or Evans Way, is, it's narrower than a standard roadway, and you may want to look into that.
Well, again-
Because for something like this-
He's got three proposals here, too, which maybe you can look at, or Mr. Houston can look at, and say to the board, after your meetings tonight, this is one that I see possibly could be acceptable. And again, there's three, there's two plans here, I can get more, but there's two, and there's three pages. And I tried to get ahold of Paul Cutler, who was the engineer, before I came here tonight, and unfortunately, I didn't get a call back, because I wanted some more things explained to me. I'm not an engineer.
There's three what there? Three?
Three, three different proposals.
Three concepts.
Yes, thank you. But this is, so John's fairly ill here tonight, but this is what that whole area looked like. And a lot of these smaller lots have single-family houses on them. And if you go over to Crescent Ave., there were a lot of 5,000-square-foot lots that were built on.
I think from what I'm hearing, though, John, the question isn't the lot size, the frontage.
No, no, I understand that. We understand that. But I think John should be filled in, too.
I have no vote, so you can, you can stem.
Oh, you know, okay. Oh, I was just going to have them fill you in on Bob McGee. Was it Michelle?
Yes.
If you remember what Bob said, he would rather have seen a private road here. It's still passable by anybody that lives up in that area, and then we would grade off the rest of the road. Put up those, almost posts at the end, which if needed, for emergency purposes, could be busted down by a fire truck, a police car, whatever.
Right.
So we would, then, you know, he was proposing, we would grade off the road at that time, and then in the future, if he wanted to bring the water around, he could.
All right. Jeff, do you have any other comments on this, before we open it up to the public?
No, I'm just taking a look at Gino's comment here on page three. I mean, I think I know what the options are. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the concerns are, if we do a public, public road, there's a question of how non-conforming, you know, we're willing to, to allow it to be, correct? I mean, that's, that's the concern. Yeah, we have certain requirements in terms of frontage, which, you know, will result in a certain length of roadway, but in terms of the other requirements, in terms of width and grade and such. And that particular comment may talk a little bit about that, is that all my particular decision. And then the other option is the private, private road, which, you know, there's some precedent, you know, implications, and I'm not clear on how significant those are. You know, the circumstances that exist here in terms of the grade and such, can the extent of precedent be minimized, because there are some special circumstances, you know, in this case? And I guess maybe that's a question for town council, you know, rather than those of us on the board. I don't know.
I think under all circumstances, the way remains private. It would never be brought to the town for town meeting, or the plan would not be to do, so I suppose the property owner could at some point. But I think the board's understanding is that it would never be brought to town meeting for acceptance as a public way. The standards to which it was constructed, constructed, should emulate the standards for a public way to a substantial extent, so that we could find that- so that we could find that the access and utilities are adequate. But in terms of its legal status, I think would always be a private way.
So you're actually asking to set up a precedent for a private way?
Yeah, we don't have any precedent of recent memory of any private ways being established in this town.
What about Toils End?
Oh, well, it's an ancient way. Are you talking about the... That was determined to be a...
Didn't we do a spur road off that?
A public road, right?
I forget.
Yeah, that was determined to be. That was in court. That was determined to be a public way.
Yeah, I remember that. But didn't we do a little spur road off it, though, for frontage for the two lots? Or the...
There is a spur road off of Toils End Road right now, yeah.
An estate lot.
Two lots and an estate.
Estate lot, so it wasn't a road, yeah.
I mean, is there any advantage to treating it as a public way eventually, you know, having it become a public way, given what Bob McGee is interested in doing in terms of some of the utilities and...
No, I think the town could reserve rights to put a water main in or could, if it... I think it has them now. If it doesn't, you could request, to the degree that they could convey it, you could request that the applicant allow the extension of a water main there. The disadvantage, I think, is if it becomes a public way, the town has an obligation to maintain it. And this is going to be a difficult road to maintain just in terms of slope and maintaining it during winter conditions. But... So if there are no private ways in town that serve as frontage for lots, then that may be something we want to talk to town council about. Other towns do it.
There may be some holdovers from the past that are considered private ways.
But a newly created one that is presidential.
Do you have any questions, Michelle, if you already asked all yours?
I'm done.
Now, all done? Okay. I'm gonna open this up to the public. If you could identify yourself for the record.
And use the microphone.
Yes. Any questions? Okay. Grab a microphone.
My name's Jerry Cotton. I live at 69 Basilar. In order to make it a private way, don't the abutters have to approve that?
He's not on. You just flip your button up, please.
Flip the button so that the green light's on.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
My name's Jerry Cotton, 69 Basilar Ave. To be approved as a private way, do the abutters have to agree to that? Or how does that work?
Well, he has every right to develop it, to give himself access to his lot. So if the town does not accept the roadway at town meeting, then it will be an unaccepted public way. So it's not something that the town would maintain.
Well, who's responsible to maintain it?
The person who's there if they want to maintain it. If the town doesn't accept it, it's not a town road.
Well, if I'll land about 30 feet at the end of the road, didn't we have to maintain that? Or is it...
You'll land about 30 feet at the end?
Yeah, 33 feet of MacArthur, yes.
Now, where are you talking about it? If you could just show us on this map here.
Cindy, we're sure.
Yeah, you're that lot, right?
You live here?
Yeah, I live here. Just 42 and a half feet is...
So it's your responsibility now to clear it, and it would be your responsibility going forward to clear it?
Even though it's just that private way?
Just that...
The driveway.
My driveway is over here.
So she actually enters the lot from a whole different street?
I don't use it.
You don't have to clear it. But if you want it cleared, it would be your responsibility to clear it.
Well, then, am I liable if the house is, if this is turned into a private way for the benefit of the lot behind me?
They have the right to clear it as well.
But if I don't clear it and they don't clear it, if somebody slides down that hill into the street and causes an accident, am I liable?
I can't see if, I can't see how it's any different than it is as it exists now.
Right. If somebody drove up there right now and slid down.
Well, you can put this here. Say they pave it.
I'm not saying you would or wouldn't. I don't know from a legal perspective.
Say they pave it, and this kid skateboarded down there, and there's a pothole down my 42 feet of it, and he falls down and breaks his neck. Are we liable for it? Can they sue us? Of course they're gonna try and sue the abutters.
Well, you don't own the private way. You just own some frontage on it. That's all.
Yeah, but I'm responsible for taking care of this 42 feet of it because I'm an abutter, correct?
If you want to use it.
You have no legal responsibility. You don't own it. If you wanted to access it from that way and you wanted to clear it, that would be up to you. But you don't own it.
Well, he's gonna clear it so you can get to access to his land.
I understand, but you have no legal obligation then.
But we can check on that for you.
Well, I mean, it is a legal issue, you know. Like, if he does build a road there a private way, say there's an oil truck that goes up there to deliver oil, was he gonna back down? It's a blind corner to start with. Was he gonna back down to the road on an icy road?
Well, that's why we want at least a hammerhead up there to be able to turn around on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment just on the gentleman's original question, there may be limitations on the extent of the improvements which one abutter can do in a private way. My understanding, and again, if you want clarification, it's probably a town council question, but my understanding is that abutters can make improvements sufficient to make the roadway passable, but they can't totally reconstruct it. So if we're talking about a total reconstruction of the road, I can evaluate it from an engineering point of view whether the proponent has the legal ability to do it. I can't comment.
Well, I could also mention the fact that on Toils End Road, there was extensive legal work done on that roadway. And the people that lived further in, the next lot in from Grove Street, they won their court case saying that they could improve the road to be able to develop their parcel. And it was a situation just like this one.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a matter of degree. Because when I was on the planning board in my town, the planning board required total reconstruction of a road, and the court struck our decision down saying that one abutter to a private way didn't have authority to totally reconstruct it. So it may be one of those ambiguous areas of case law where the courts come down on either side. But I'm just saying, I believe it to be an issue. I'm not an attorney, and I can't provide legal advice with respect to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes? Oh, microphone.
My name is Norman Mullany. I live at 89 Midway Street. And one of the questions I have is the stormwater drainage study that we performed for this site to assess the impact the project will have in the area.
Don't believe they had done all their stormwater drainage tests yet, but they would.
No, you know, we're just working on the basics right now. We haven't gotten to the point of developing that yet.
But they would need to for the full approval.
The reason why I'm asking this question, the drawings show leaching catch bases, which I believe are no longer legal. Since 1996 and 97, the DEP requirements have changed, and everyone has to comply with the Environmental Protection Agency's regulations regarding stormwater pollution reasons, particularly in this area because it was a lake, and the lake is part of the Charles River. Any runoff from that road, MacArthur, which is to Basilar Avenue, a short distance from the lake, is going to affect the lake. So under the current regulations, some sort of pretreatment under best management practices is required for that. And if you look at the topography in our lanes available, there's no room for that at the foot of this roadway.
Well, Tom could answer that. Is there room in that area to be able to put in some subsurface drainage?
Yes.
With the treatment that's required?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're talking about pre-cast concrete manholes with water gush traps going to intercepting the grain.
You would have a pretreatment device going to a leaching facility, yes.
Well, where would the leaching facility be located? I don't see that there's any room available.
That's a...
Would anyone members of the board go up and look at this road?
Yeah, but you're speculating on a drainage that hasn't been designed yet. I mean, that really wasn't a...
But they're showing on the current plans, leaching catch bases.
What kind of plans?
They don't want them acceptable.
Well, these are concepts. We've got nothing before us with any final plans.
There was an engineer here at the last meeting, and he had a plan that showed leaching catch bases. He mentioned catch bases.
There was such a plan. It's not before and now.
Yeah, but it's not something that we have in our possession.
I understand that, but the question is still...
Right. And if they come before us, then they will have to deal with their stormwater. Any other questions?
Hi, my name's Tony DeFilippo, and I'm at 66 Lake Shore Drive. I'm the abutter right at the bottom of MacArthur. So I pretty much own the four lots going up MacArthur off of Lake Shore Drive. So the entire road would pretty much impact the backside of my land. I guess my first question is, I heard a lot about, you know, do the owners own to the middle? Do they not? Do we determine if we do or do not?
They all have the right of access to MacArthur Ave.
But do we own to the middle of it, the abutters?
I don't think that was ever researched.
Because we have a letter from Butch Vito, because he told us about 10 years ago, and I brought this up at four meetings ago. And there's a letter he put together, pretty much stating the abutters own to the middle.
It doesn't mean anything without a land court ruling. This is land court land. They have to be title searched to find out who owns it.
So even though that's on Town of Norfolk, Lettahed, it means nothing?
I would say so.
Yeah, a land court is land court.
I mean, I was just curious. I mean, it's on Town of Norfolk, Lettahed.
That's how I started the conversation.
The town is telling the abutters, we own to the middle. Now you're saying it's worthless. That doesn't make much sense to me. But he was representing the town. It's on the Lettahed, John, I mean, right?
I think he was talking about conception, like I mentioned a while ago. Years ago, they used to own halfway to the roadway. But as I asked, this hasn't...
Specifically says in it, all the abutters.
I understand that. But I'm telling you, years ago, conventionally, each landlord owned half of the street. That's how it was done. There's been no title search in this, and that's why I was asking, who owns this right of way legally? And there's still no answer that I know of.
So didn't we ask that like three meetings ago, though?
But even so, they still have the right to access their property. So if they have to put in what we require, then they have the right to do it.
Second question is, I don't know if, like, comment was anybody's been up there. You're talking about grading the road. If you go up there now, that road is like a half-pipe. If you stand in the middle, the edges are like this high.
Well, that's why we're being very cautious about what we're requiring for the conditions that are going to be constructed.
So if you're digging into it, you know, the edges that are this high are going to be a lot higher. And then what do you do with walls and, I mean, drainage, et cetera?
That's why it's a very difficult road to build and expensive.
Okay. My third comment is, you know, if you are putting something up there and redirecting water, et cetera, my well is about 10 feet off of MacArthur. So I would need to know the impact of my well if you're up there putting a road in and different drainage and altering the path of the water flow, et cetera. Right? We have to have some assessment there. And fourth thing is, if all the abutters would like it to be a public road because of liability, this board can still say it can be private even though all the abutters want it to be a public, owned and maintained by the Town of Norfolk?
It only becomes a public road if it's voted on at town meeting. So whether or not it's brought to town meeting is questionable. It has to go before several boards before it can go to town meeting.
Because I'm in agreement with that, you know, from a liability standpoint. If we're responsible for clearing, if nothing happens, if you look back in the police records, I don't know, maybe eight or nine years ago, Town of Norfolk Police was coming down in the wintertime, slid right down and hit a cop. So, you know, from a liability standpoint, I have major concerns with that.
Well, that is the note that I have right here about the liability of the frontage for abutters. I've got that written down, so we'll check that with town council.
Sir, could I just verify the number or name of something of the lot where this well is? Or the owner or something?
Oh, it's me.
Yeah. And your name, sir?
Anthony DeFilippo. And I can show you right where it is. I've wrote on that plan, though.
Okay.
Is there another?
What's that?
With all the independent lots?
Well, I get the smaller ones.
Yeah, please, Chuck, so I can show them where it is.
Can I point out, too, that he uses MacArthur now for a driveway access to his land?
Oh, so you're talking, you're the one to the right of the roadway, then?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So you could just point to us where the well is.
I mean, the well is, this is MacArthur. The well is like right here. It's right off the side of the road.
I think in past studies, it shows that when something is done like this, you have an analysis done on your well for the production and the suitability. And if something changes the results of your well after the construction, I think it becomes a deal between you and the person developing the road. It becomes a personal situation.
Then I got an issue with that, too.
Yeah.
I mean...
That's how it works.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would have a big issue with that.
Yeah.
So I hope you're taking all that in consideration, all the boards, before you make any sort of determination. Thank you.
All right.
We could certainly write something into it to modify that.
Yeah. Anybody else? Does anybody else have comment? All right. So we want to continue this, right? When would you like to continue this to?
Oh, when's the next available? And then we're talking about, I mean, do we want to hear the legal issues from town council?
Well, we will. We will have information for the next meeting from town council.
Prior to the meeting, or...
If we can get it to you prior to the meeting, then we'll try to. But there's no guarantee that town council will respond as quickly as you would.
Engineering costs, do we go forward with...
Well, you'll be talking with Tom about your concepts here. So we don't have any recommended days for our next meeting there, Betsy?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, there's one down here that's, he's suggesting at the bottom, the 24th of June.
Twenty-four. Oh, there it is. Oh, okay. 24th of June? Is that acceptable to people?
Yes.
I have to check.
Yeah, it's two weeks from tonight.
Steve, I will be absent for that one.
You will. We're not going to be able to do it because you missed meetings at the beginning. You're gonna want four members at the meeting. So let's see now, the June 24th was the one that was scheduled for the next meeting. So...
I will be back the 5th of July.
Two weeks after that is what, the 1st and the 8th? That seems like a bad week to hold a meeting. The week of the 4th?
No, it's the week after the 4th.
Oh, the week after the 4th. Oh. Well, the 8th is okay, then, I guess.
So are we doing the 24th and the 8th, but he's on the 8th?
Well, once we have, we'll scratch the 24th, unless we actually have to.
All right. We can scratch the 24th and just do the 8th. Does anyone have any conflict with the 8th?
Looks good.
8th of July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to continue this to July 8th?
I move that we continue the hearing for MacArthur Ave to July 8th at 7:30 p.m.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There you go.
Can I give these to Tom so that when he's talking to Paul, they can...
And we should have a response by July 8th on whether or not that liability is...
No, just, you know, I didn't want to do engineering fees without, I don't, well...
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Thank you.
Okay. Sandy Knoll Estates. Who's representing? Ah, there you are. Okay.
Julie D. Mills from...
Oh, yes. Mr. White, we have these in, uh...
Sir, do you mind turning that just a little bit? Just a little bit.
Okay, I, I don't have a copy of the emails that we received on...
They might be in this.
Oh, you think? Ah, okay. Maybe, Tom, you, you sent an email on this also, right?
Uh, we did, and Gino did, yes.
Oh, okay.
Do you need to read this?
Yep, all right. I notice a public hearing. In accordance with the Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section seventeen, Town of Norfolk Bylaws and Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June tenth, twenty fourteen, at seven forty-five P.M. In room one twenty-four of the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., on the application of Maple Sands Corp. of Franklin, Mass. for an earth removal slash relocation permit for moving and stockpiling earth on-site within the Sandy Knoll Estates two subdivision off Miller Street on Silver Fox Road. The property is located in the R-two zoning district, reference assessor's map, three block, seven lots, seventeen to twenty-one. The plan applications are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
All right, so, I think that what's going to come forward tonight is a little different than what we were anticipating. And it has to do with, everything that is now remaining is on individual lots. Now, according to, all of the bylaws can't be touched. None of it can be touched going forward until the lots have their own individual...
Earth removals?
Yeah, earth removal permits. So, therefore, you can't touch anything there unless you're going to develop the lot and you come forward with an earth removal permit for each individual lot. It's not what I was expecting to hear, but that's what we got. So, how much do you have left up there?
How much material do we have left? Uh-uh.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
We probably, we probably have about four or five thousand yards of loom which is going to remain there for the lots in Norfolk.
Uh-huh.
And we have probably about three to four thousand yards of, of sandy gravel that has to be removed to make the lots comply with what you see there.
Yeah, so, what we've gotten from two consultants says that until you apply for earth removal permits for each individual lot, you can't move anything.
If I'm mistaken, Mr. Chairman, I think they asked for building permits to be issued prior to the earth removal?
Correct.
Okay. The reason why we came in with this concept plan is we do have border health permits on each one of the lots. It is what it is.
Yeah, we were expecting to be able to go forward with what we had thought that would be the most expeditious way to go forward.
And we, we were working in accordance with the agreements that we had hashed out with you folks.
Steve, I was mistaken, because I thought, at one point, there was a bylaw that would allow the transfer of materials on adjacent lots. I thought, two years ago.
That was, that was a year ago, it was recent, and you can transfer, but within ninety days, you have to start building or lumen seeded.
Okay, okay. So, there was just an additional requirement that I didn't recall at the time.
Do you mind if I ask, where, I was up there this afternoon, I'm new on this, but where did all that material come from?
I don't know how, how long you've been in town, Mr. Willman, but this has been, was a gravel pit fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, before my time, and it's been the same. We haven't cut a tree on that property. We did run the road through it, but what the material that remains is part of the original hill that you could see from the original plans that we submitted with the topos, et cetera.
So, nothing was put on that hill from the subdivision process?
No.
From cutting of the road, it was.
That's what, well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, because if you look at the original subdivision plan, there's a slope easement there.
But that's at the lower, that's the lower end of the road, not where the hill, where the actual hill is.
Yeah.
If, if that answers your...
How long is the road in Norfolk?
Late, about twelve hundred feet.
So, how much material comes out of that that's piled up on the, on the lot?
Right now, we'd like to, you know, we think that the guesstimate that was done by the engineers is, is extremely high. We're looking five, six thousand yards maybe at the most, taken out as far as gravel goes.
There's a lot of cuts and fills.
So, that was all from the, the road construction in, in Norfolk put there?
Yeah, it was a big valley, so they have a fifty-foot hill.
Well, not, not the, not the hill that's there presently.
Oh, oh, the hill that's here now.
The one that's there has trees growing out.
The hill that we're presently referring to as far as taking down is the hill that's been there since...
And the material that they put on there from the road construction, because the road was finished, what, eight, nine years ago?
Correct, approximately, yeah, yeah.
Was that ever taken off the site?
I don't believe so. We had a, I, I think we had a permit initially to remove, when the plan was approved, eighteen hundred or nineteen hundred yards. Uh, I don't recall whether, we just knocked that into one of the valleys and it wasn't taken out or not. Eight or nine years ago.
That was what it should have been taken out, right when the road was done. That material from the road construction should have been taken out.
But this is, this actually is not road materials. That, we, we did take the hills and the valleys and blend them all together within the road construction area.
I just asked, I just asked how much of the material there is from the road, and that's when this gentleman said...
Well, some of it was from the, it's a slope easement that goes into the lots, in case we walk away, we don't...
But the original, but from the original road construction, is material on that site?
There might be a little from the slope easement, because we had, there's a slope easement on the original plan.
Whatever.
I, I don't know, I can't really estimate what it is. I mean, we did a lot of cuts and fills up there.
So, most of that stuff is taken off, and what's left is all natural?
Yes, sir. You can see by the topos there that you can see the hill that is presently, and that blends right into the backyard of the property that hasn't been touched, so that you can see that it's all natural.
Did I understand you to say that you, you think the number's much less than this twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-six cubic yards?
I don't anticipate, as much as I'd like to think that there was that kind of material that I could get a permit to take out, I don't think that's anywhere near that amount.
That's a huge difference, I mean, it's...
Yeah, we, I, I think that by the time we get through this, like, half of what they're talking about, of which we're going to leave the loan, which we're going to need to put back on the property. Now, this, this property, I, I did notice the building inspector's comments. We've never touched this property. This is, this is the sand pit that was there, other than the roadway, which we had a permit to use. This is the sand pit that we purchased with the other acreage.
But you've, you've been screening property. You've been screening the loom and stuff.
We have, we have screened some loom there. We have, we have, we're blessed with owning land in both Norfolk and Franklin, and we have material in both communities.
Because the building inspector's letter was that the screening of the land for the earth removal permit is not allowed. It's a commercial use. So, none of this material should be screened. It should be taken off the site as is.
The screening of the loom, we plan on leaving the screened loom that's on the site, back onto the site so that we can regrade and landscape the lots.
But the screening of it and selling it outside is a commercial use.
We have, we have...
A permit from whom?
Well, we did have a permit enforced with this particular board.
Earth removal doesn't, doesn't allow screening of loom and taking off site?
I guess, what, what do you consider taking off site? We have loom in Franklin that we have screened. Our road goes on both sides, both Franklin and Norfolk.
But you got to sign up there, "Loom for sale", which basically makes that a commercial pit, which isn't anything to do with the, the earth removal permit. That's par, that's paragraph two of the building inspector's letter.
We have, we have offered some loom for sale, that's correct.
But basically, from now on, nothing can be screened.
Nothing can be taken off until you have...
Well, exactly.
Across the street is Franklin. Across the street is Franklin.
But nothing can come off of here to be brought across the street to be screened. Nothing. Nothing.
To, to agree on the board.
But that's going forward until you have...
If you recall, we moved the screener, we talked to the board, and it was recommended that we remove this, take the screener and move it as far away from residential properties as possible to cut down any noise that was involved.
Right, but even if you moved the screener back onto these parcels, you still couldn't do it.
And it sounds like...
And kept it in Norfolk.
No.
No, you can't, no, you can't screen it.
You can't screen lots, you can't screen loom in your own lots?
On your own lot, you can. Once a lot has a building permit, that's correct. One other question before I forget. You have an open order of conditions on the subdivision.
That's correct.
What's the status of that? Because this is a, a natural heritage protected habitat, which means you should have filed with them before the subdivision was done.
Actually, I'm glad you asked that, because since the Town of Norfolk's conservation, of course, the National Heritage Act is run by the Fish and Games. We've been in communication with them for years. We haven't filed in Norfolk because we don't...
You don't file with Norfolk. You need a letter from the natural heritage saying it's okay to, to destroy land on the property.
Let me, let me read you the, the letter that we have. "Based on the review of the information that we've provided and the information that is currently contained on our database, we determine this project occurs very near, but not within, not within, the actual habitat of the state-listed rare wildlife species."
Excellent. What date is the letter?
This was done in two thousand six.
Okay, very good. That's one question solved.
Thank you very much.
Now, as far as the open order of conditions?
Orders and conditions, we've, still have them in force.
You haven't recorded them yet.
Oh, I, I believe that we have, my friend.
We checked the file. We don't have any recording data on the orders, so if you do have it, you should turn it in.
I don't have the complete file, but not only did we file it, we actually even forgot an extension from you folks back in two thou, excuse me, two thousand four. The original orders were filed. I'd be very surprised, but I, I will...
You should get the recording information. Yeah, and right now, that's, that's...
I'd be delighted to get it.
They've actually expired because you've updated the three-year limit.
The three-year limit as...
Well, your extension was, was dated when?
The extension that we had was issued to us in two thousand four.
And how many years was the extension on that?
I believe it's similar to other permits that, with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Goes from one to three.
They have been extended.
Right, but you're not in that date. Anyways, you should probably update your file with the conservation commission.
We will bring in filing information with you, and I, I can't believe what the attorney that I had on the project, extremely competent...
It happens.
I, I can't believe that it happened to us, is what I'm saying. But I'll be delighted to provide that with the court.
Walter, do you have any comments on this?
Well, the real question is, where do we go from here? And it sounds like, based on what you said, the recommendation of the two consultants is they need to apply for individual permits, right?
Right.
And that's the next step.
Because they have a, they have an earth removal permit for each individual.
But they need a building, a building permit on each lot.
Yeah.
And then they have to prove that they're taking out the minimum needed to not create a hardship.
Yeah.
So, when you start to grade back a hundred, excuse me, a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet from the back of the foundation, that, that's hard for us to be a hardship.
I think it's in everybody's best interest to see what we can do to lay out those conditions and get this thing moving so that we can finish it.
What we did was, we perked the lots, designed the systems, located the homes on there. We put, we have border health permits showing the topographics of the system, et cetera, et cetera, so that we could come before this board and not realizing that we need to have a building permit. No, if we need a building permit, we're ready to bond the road anyway, and we're ready, we could, we could submit build applications for building permits, so, at the same time.
Good. Tom?
Just maybe two things, Mr. Chairman, and maybe it would suffice to give the gentleman some direction. But when we reviewed this, we did take a look at the input that GLM, the applicant's engineer gave us. And it did appear to be Autodesk earthwork computations. So, I would assume that the twenty-nine thousand cubic yards of earth is accurate, and reserving the six thousand cubic yards of loam, that is twenty-three thousand cubic yards of earth. It's going to be taken off the site, which is nineteen hundred truckloads, so it's a, it's a substantial issue. The reason I mention that is, is kind of twofold. Did we want to request, and I don't know whether the gentleman would be amenable to doing it, but do we want to request a redesign of the lots so that less material is brought off the site? The other issue I was, I'd like to raise is, we don't have any information about any future earthwork that may be required on the south side of the roadway in order to complete the project. I don't know if there is material, additional material that has to be brought off the site to do anything on the south side. There are, a li, there's a little bit of grading on the plans submitted, but it's difficult to compare that to the grading on the subdivision plan, because it's kind of cut off. So, I think if we're, we should probably know what the total earthwork going off the site is, including anything, if there is anything that has to come off on, on the south side of the roadway.
I believe the south side, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, we've graded that in landscape that planted grass on that area, and we haven't gone anything further into that area from the normal street taking.
So, that's in compliance with the grading required on the subdivision plan at this point?
Well, we, it's, it's in reasonable compliance. The, I tell you, it's, we're, it's difficult to grow grass in a sand pit, but...
But the, the rough grading, to your knowledge, is in compliance with the grading indicated on the subdivision?
Well, the rough grading along the side of the road going in for the first tower, twelve, fourteen feet is, is compliant with the grading that showed on the plan.
So, you, you will not be coming to the board to request any additional earth removal related to the south side?
I have no immediate plans or, and no thoughts on that matter whatsoever. It hasn't ever, it, it hasn't come up. As far as redesigning the lots, I, I can't see how we could redesign them any different than what we already have. We brought this, we brought the homes as close, reasonably close to the front of the, of the street that would be normal, a normal setback. I think they're about sixty-something feet back. And for the most part, we have tried to place the septic systems either in the front or along the side. We, we do have some drainage areas that we had to take into consideration when we designed the systems, so that it wasn't that we couldn't move everything in the front. Or, so we do have a couple in the back, but for the most part, we tried to put all the systems in the front of the home, again, minimizing grading requirements.
Some of your grading cuts look like they go in behind the foundation by about a hundred and fifty feet. So, when you read the earth removal permit, were you allowed to take out the bare minimum? A hundred and fifty feet, you know, could cause you an issue.
Well, I think that the main, the main body of material is on that middle lot... Well, I think that the main body of material is on that middle lot. You can see that the oval shape there, that is the main body of the material. And we do have a, the septic system is to the left of that, and we, you know, we have conformed with all the border health requirements.
I understand that. I'm just looking at your finished grade lines.
That is, well, that's not, that particular hill is, the way I look at it, and again, I'm not right up on top of it, but that particular hill is well within 70, 80 feet of the home.
You should go over and look at, on Chatham Street, on Cape Cod Estates, there's something that was similar to this that Dennis Marguerite did. And there's a house with a huge 50 to 70-foot knoll in the back, and what they were allowed was a 30-foot backyard. And then you've got almost a one-to-one slope going right up behind that, which is earth they couldn't take out. So your job is going to be to prove that you're taking out the bare minimum.
We might sell one of these too with a decent backyard, acre and a half lots.
My thought would be, and I haven't cited septic systems and done breakout analysis and all that type of thing, but my reaction to looking at the grading is that the houses typically could be raised in elevation somewhat, which would reduce the volume of fill coming out. It's not going to be zero, but it might be less than we have now.
As you know, the road is down five, seven feet from, and if you notice the grading from garage area into the homes is not a bad one. It's a very reasonable sloping. If I was to raise the home up, then I'd have an uphill driveway, which ludicrous when you've got a relatively flat lot.
Well, if it were, well, if it were less flat, you have less earthwork and maybe you're compromised.
The top of the foundation is about 10 feet higher than the roadway, which means they probably are going to have an eight-foot grade above the street.
Right. I mean, 10 feet above the, 10 feet above the road seems to be fairly reasonable to me.
It's all in the equation of how much material you want to take out and transport.
Well, I think it'd be, once we come in with the building permits, predominantly we'll be coming in, coming in with the first one on the largest earth removal, and we'll enter discussion with the board as to what they would like us to do and go from there.
That sounds reasonable.
Tom, do you have any other questions?
You call me Tom again.
Yeah, I am. Jeff.
No, I think, I think we've covered it.
Michelle?
No, I just, you know, a couple other comments from the conservation commission in addition to the national heritage which you answered, but they're also noting that the lot configurations aren't matching those shown on the assessor's map, and that the lots fall within the FEMA zone, no base flood elevation is determined. So a couple of other things that need to be tidied up, I think, prior to getting your building permits.
I thought she said that the lots did conform with the.
Yes, she did.
With the lots.
You're in a questionable flood plain, though. You have got to find out the elevation.
Sorry, I thought I said you're not.
Yeah. The flood plain was a result of the conservation area, as you probably might remember. This is the water that runs into the earth. It doesn't go anywhere, goes through the sand, ends up in, late.
It's not my point. You're on the new FEMA maps. You're on the new FEMA maps, and this section shows a questionable area, your section. So what you should do is, and they're giving no elevation for the flood plain, so what you should do, you're going to have to win away when you sell these houses to follow through and make sure that part of your land is in a flood plain.
I would be reasonably confident that that would be the case.
Yeah. But that's where it shows up on the map. That's what she was saying.
So we certainly can, having just got these comments within the last four or five hours, we'll bring it to our engineers. And we will, we've already had this board approve our bonding figure, so we will proceed with the bond figure and have the bond placed, and then we will file for our necessary building permits, and we provide whatever other information this board is looking to require.
All right. So we should close this hearing because.
Open to public.
What's that? Oh, that's true. Do we have any comments from the public here?
I have a question.
Yes.
All but.
Right here.
Is there a permit in existence right now?
Microphone, please.
Just like, is there a permit right now that sits for?
There is not, and they cannot remove anything from those lots. Nothing.
And there'll be no more screening.
My question was going to be, I guess I should, if the existing permit was for the road only, I was wondering since the road has already been brought up, was finished eight or nine years ago, what's been going on up there all those years? If it was for the road only, all the stuff that's not there anymore.
I think a lot of the assumption was that what a lot of the removal was remnants from when the road was put in. And we've now subsequently realized that it has nothing to do with what was taken off when the road was put in.
The purpose of the earth removal is to not have the developers cause a hardship by taking off material they could use a screen in constructing the road. And that's why a minimum allowed, is allowed to be taken off the site during the road construction. But on the other hand, they're, on that same vein, they're not allowed to cause a hardship for the abutting neighbors. And an earth removal permit that's been in existence for 10 years probably isn't the way it should go. So basically, they're flipping up the benefit that they're getting from an earth removal and causing a harm to the neighbors.
Well, this is what I.
Yeah, so that's what's going to, that's what's going to stop.
Yeah, it's back to the 15 years.
Okay. Who's counting?
15 years? I don't think so.
Who's counting?
We weren't working on it to, just be accurate is all we ask. Welcome to come, obviously, but just be accurate. You're not entitled to your own dates.
You should be talking to the chair.
Yeah.
We're moving forward.
Okay. This way, this way. Don't argue across, across the room.
Well, I'm not going to be censored by someone.
Right, you can speak back to us. There's no problem. Okay. Now, any other comments or questions from the public? Yes. Microphone?
Chris Malas, should we just move the 15 acres through? And then found out that Mount St. Silver Fox has been there for about eight, 10 years, perhaps, has trees growing out of it, so we can tell that it's been there a while. I think from our perspective, it sounds like the next step would be that they would in fact get building permits and then start getting rid of the dirt and start to build houses on the block. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then it would start with.
He's saying the one where the major earth removal is.
Yeah, the one you pointed to.
That's the parcel that you just pointed at. Yes.
They can start where they want, but if they don't start technically within a few months, they have to lumen seed that whole area.
Okay. So basically, I think from our perspective, we're concerned about the length of time it's taking and the effect of, say, the different types of machinery on the land causing structural damage to our house. It shakes a lot when they're on it, and so I think from at least my perspective, something to expedite this so that it actually gets to completion would be really great.
That's what we're trying to do.
Can you point to where you live?
Maybe.
No, not one.
I believe it's this one here.
Okay.
Thank you.
The dirt piles out our backyard.
Thank you.
The dirt pile is down below, did you?
Yes, yes.
Further down, with the oval this?
Yeah, she knows where it is.
Like, I have pictures on my phone of that. I can show you pictures.
Right, right in there.
It's fairly close. Thank you.
Several hundred feet away.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, we're going to have to open up new earth removal permits. This one's going to be closed. Do I have a motion to close this hearing for the earth removal permit for Sandy Knoll Estates Two?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you'll be getting building permits really quick, huh?
Well, we filed a bond, as we said, and we will proceed accordingly, unless you have something else.
No.
I, I thought we had followed all the procedures initially. Thank you.
All right. Now, see you later.
My suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is when we go and do new earth removal permits, we should have a time date for the amount of yardage being taken off, along with the truck route, and any police details necessary, all in one swift move.
Yep. And we have to work on the earth removal bylaws. Is there anyone here representing 106, 108 Main Street?
To this.
Nope, I guess not. So should we, we should continue this to our July 8th meeting then?
While you continue it.
Because there's no one here to present anything if there's something new. They could always come in with a mixed-use plan.
But that's a change of scope.
It is.
Requiring a buttered notification.
Yes, it would. But I would, personally would rather not just close it without someone here to, to hear it.
But that was not what town council had suggested.
Town council had, yeah, had recommended that we just deny it, but.
Or they withdraw.
Or they withdraw.
Correct.
Or if they want, they can reapply for something that's a mixed use. But I would rather not just close it and deny it tonight unless somebody else has another recommendation. Does anyone else feel as though that we should just deny it and close it tonight?
Well, I think your point of, there ought to be representatives of the project here in front of us when we make that decision. I support that, Steve.
Jeff?
Well, I guess, you know, my concern is, you know, people have made themselves available for these public hearings, which, you know, on more occasions than not have been continued. So.
Well, I don't think it will be continued after the 8th. If they don't show on the 8th, then.
Could we get some input, please, from our planner and our consultant?
Yeah. Do you guys have anything to comment on this one?
We did receive an email this afternoon asking for a continuance. I believe I forwarded that email to the board members.
Oh, I don't remember getting that. It must have been after I left work.
Yeah, it was after five.
It was very late.
Oh, okay. Oh, so they asked for a continuance?
They did ask for a continuance.
Oh, okay.
There was some other paperwork that did come with it. You'll see it tomorrow, probably. But based on the paperwork that I reviewed, I didn't see any, any reason in that paperwork that told us that.
Was it copy of part of the mass subdivision laws, rules and regulations?
Yes, yes. It's always the board's decision as to whether you continue something or not.
Oh, right.
Even when an applicant does ask for a continuance.
I think it's reasonable to take the position that says if they don't show up on the 8th, that's a different story.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So do you have an objection to that?
Well, it's just that, you know, I don't know that a withdrawal really makes any sense because as my understanding here, given the legal opinion, you know, the actions that were taken at town meeting and the legal opinion are that it doesn't conform to zoning, so.
We have invalid permits.
You know, yeah. So, I mean, I just think on that basis, it's probably, I think that the only reasonable course of action is to deny the, the application, the filing at this point.
Well, I'll take a straw poll and see if there's a majority that would like to just finish it tonight. If, do we have, do you feel as though we should finish it tonight, or do you think that we should continue it until there's a representative at the meeting?
I don't think we, we haven't discussed any of the findings that have been presented since the town meeting, but from what we've been receiving via email, there's, you know, nothing that points to any direction other than denying it at this point. So I don't know if it's customary to, again, allow the applicant, you know, the chance to request the continuance, even if we're all, even in favor of denial, if we'd want to grant them that right to at least.
Question is, why isn't the applicant here?
Present the board.
Well, that's a point also. Yeah.
Should we make any comments here?
When the board's done.
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess if I were pushed right now for a decision, I'd probably, I would probably lean towards deny.
So we've got two denials, two requesting to go forward. Sorry, John, you've got no, no vote in this one.
Yes, I do. On the PMLD, I do.
Oh, you were here from the beginning? Oh, that's right, because the application came in last week.
Yes.
That's right. So.
Last meeting was the first.
The last meeting was the first one, the, with the, the PMLD application was before us.
That was the first time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would go to, I would go to deny, but on the same hand, if the applicant came back with a mixed-use plan and notified the butters, I certainly wouldn't entertain waiving any fees because of him being, or them being stuck in the middle of the process. I have no problem with that, but, I mean, everybody's been hanging on the butters. There should be a re-notification, everything updated, and this is, we've got word from town council, we've got word from a planner, and that's the direction I'm taking.
There was some correspondence that came up about this being withdrawn and denied on October 1st, when we were talking about the site.
That was just for the subdivision roadway.
And then, weren't there three different applications? There was the subdivision that was done by Dover.
There were three.
That was done by Dover.
The site plan for 106, the site plan for 108.
So the subdivision was the only one, though. What happened to the middle one, the site plan for 106, 108?
There's still, that's what we're still going through.
So that hasn't been.
They amended their original application for a PMLD.
Doesn't that go back to the question that's at hand with legal, then? The site plan decision is still open.
But that's a special permit.
Granted, but that's still an option.
What's that?
To try and go for that special permit.
The special permit is talking about zoning that is no longer allowed.
I thought that was only under the PMLD.
No. There is no more dense housing in the lower B1.
I don't think there's any residential allowed in that.
There is no residential, only mixed use.
So even on, even if someone wanted to build a new, a single-family home there, they wouldn't be able to.
If you are correct, we definitely should continue and go forward, but there, there's no chance of that plan that's not allowed anymore.
That is technically correct. What was struck from the zoning bylaw was the ability to build residential-only developments in the B1 district outside the business core, which is what this project is being filed under. So that option no longer is available to the applicant because it was deleted from the zoning bylaw by town meeting.
So.
So is not a whole lot.
I think that the board is weighing towards denying the special permit. Is that correct?
It's my vote.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. So does someone want to make a motion to deny the special permit for 106?
It's basically two.
Shouldn't you close the hearing first?
There's two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to close the hearing first.
And get public comment.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have public comment, but you already know what we're going to do. So any public comment on this particular one?
Well, I guess you're going to deny this. Do I understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I was going to comment that, you know, we as a butters showed up here and those people that are, if they don't have the decency to at least show up, I mean, we've been here, meeting after meeting after meeting, and it's been continued, continued, continued. If they just send a letter in late, I don't think it's fair to continue it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so, so we should close 106 and then vote on 106. So do we have a motion to close the hearing, the special permit and site plan for 106 Main Street?
I think Betsy has some new information.
I just actually, just got a text message from Peter Shipman, and he said he is presently looking for an, a legal opinion on the freeze. So I think he'd like you to keep the hearing open until the next meeting.
I think we need to move on.
I believe so, too. Now that I've heard the opinion of the board, I think you're right. So we're just going to go forward with what's here. So do I have a motion?
Second. Yes.
I didn't make the motion, so is that your motion? I didn't make the motion, so is that your motion?
My motion is to close the public hearing for the special permit for PMLD and for site plan for 106 Main Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to deny the special permit for 106 Main Street?
Walter, did you vote?
For the PMLD.
I abstain, thank you.
I'll move, do we deny this special permit, PMLD for 106 Main Street?
Site plan.
And site plan.
And site, okay. A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
You should ask if anyone's opposed, Steve.
Better do a roll call vote here.
That is true. We should have a roll call vote on that, just to be sure. Walter?
I abstain.
Okay.
Jeff Bulombo, deny.
Stephen McLean, deny.
Michelle Mayhew, deny.
John Waddleton, deny.
Okay. Could we have a rep, a repeat of the motions for 108?
Okay, so this is a roll call vote for, well, we did a roll call vote for...
We're just gonna close it first, and then we'll do a roll call for...
Before we do that, I think we have to do a roll call vote for both the PMLD and the site plan, correct?
That's what I just did.
For 106?
That's what I just did.
Just because of John's, you know, what John pointed out earlier.
Yeah, did, no, I think we did them together, didn't we?
Well, we made the motion together, but the roll call vote...
I thought the roll call vote was to deny.
It, it would be better to vote them separately, I believe.
Okay, then, does someone want to make a motion on this, the, let's vote them separately, the special permit and then the site plan? So, if you want to repeat your, your motion for the special permit and then make a new motion for the site plan?
Yeah, let's, let's, I tell you what, why don't we start from the beginning so there's no confusion, okay? So, I will make the motion to deny the special permit, PMLD for 106 Main Street.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in, oh, roll call vote.
I abstain.
Jeff Bulombo, deny.
Stephen McLean, deny.
Michelle Mayhew, deny.
John Waddleton, deny.
Okay.
Okay, so, that carries, that vote carries. Okay, I'll now make the motion to deny the site plan for 106 Main Street.
Well, is there a second on that?
Second.
All right. This, this will be a roll call vote, but site plan, we need four votes, correct?
To pass it, yes.
You can't vote on the site plan, so we only have three votes, unless...
You have four members.
We have four members.
So, if all were to be unanimous in favor, it would pass. You have the ability to pass.
That is true, we have the ability to pass.
Roll call vote.
I abstain.
Jeff Bulombo, deny.
Stephen McLean, deny.
It's a moot point.
Well, I think you, I think we...
You can vote anyway.
We should be clear.
Michelle Mayhew, deny.
Okay. Let's go on to 108 Main Street. If you want to make the same motion to close...
But does that one stay, stays closed, but does it stay, what is, what does that mean?
It, it's not denied, but can go forward. So, we have to close?
Yeah, make a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit, PMLD, and site plan for 108 Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll close, we'll, we'll deny them separately.
Make the motion to deny the special permit, PMLD, for 108 Main Street.
Second.
Jeff? Roll call?
Roll call vote?
I abstain.
Jeff Bulombo, deny.
Stephen McLean, deny.
Michelle Mayhew, deny.
John Waddleton, deny.
Okay. Site plan?
Make the motion to deny the site plan for 108 Main Street.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
I abstain.
Jeff Bulombo, deny.
Stephen McLean, deny.
Michelle Mayhew, deny.
I abstain.
All right.
I think, Steve, just by the essence of not having four votes and a positive, it's denied.
Right. Well, we'll see, so...
That's correct.
It appears as if 106, 108 may come forward again under a new format, but as it is now, it is no longer going form, forward in a, in the layout that it currently is.
I have one question, please.
Yes.
The original application for...
Do you need a microphone, please?
Peter, 108 C. Kong Street. The original application for site plan included two special permits, is that correct, for I-4A-11, I believe, and I-7A-1? The way you voted appeared to be on one single special permit, I'm just questioning that.
Which one is the I-4A-11?
I don't have my paperwork in front of me, I should know that.
Well, I have my zoning in my car.
Good place for it.
Yeah.
That's residential density?
So, that was residential only, right?
Is that the only that is still...
To exceed the 16 bedrooms.
Continuance of the ZBA?
Yeah.
To get the extra bedrooms?
That is, that's right.
Did you guys have a special permit for that here?
According to this application, there was.
So, there was two consecutive...
That has to go before the ZBA, that's the special permit before the ZBA, though.
Right, but there's still a special permit here to go to the ZBA. So, basically, I think there was two different permits going at the same time.
Okay, well...
PMLD and another one through...
Yeah, zoning board of appeals, yeah, it's the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, ZBA.
Yeah.
That was for the ZBA.
Right.
That's not...
But the ZBA permit was based on a, a...
Something that they have to pass.
But something the planning board generated as a, an application. So, for the ZBA to go for the extra bedrooms, didn't they have to, was that right off the first application?
That was off the first application.
That's my memory, too.
What you're talking about, Peter?
Well, the application showing the special permit, two parts of the zoning bylaw.
Well, one was for our board and one was for the ZBA.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
This board has no vote on that matter. That's up to the ZBA, so they need to take action on it.
I, I think what happened was this board said we couldn't go forward until we heard the outcome of that.
We had the ZBA, right.
Which we never heard, because I think then they went to the PMLD.
That's right.
Correct, so there was two special permits going at the same time.
Okay.
Yep.
But on the application to the planning board, it included...
We determined that we had no authority over that, though.
Okay.
That'll be, that should be in past meeting minutes.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Peter, 114, just one quick question. The butters gonna be notified of this decision by mail officially?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we can go into new old business.
You're, you're going to have Gina write the denial?
Yes, we will. First thing on the agenda is board reorganization.
Not gonna go over the color chart first? Okay.
We could discuss that as we work our way down.
Okay.
Because the, the new person can work the way down the list. So, Michelle, do you have any interest?
The ballards.
Being the chair?
I like the board the way it is.
Sorry, what did you say?
I said I'm happy with the board the way it is.
Oh.
I'm not sure I'm ready.
No?
You can do a great job, Michelle. I mean, I'm not sure one is ever truly ready for...
It's like learning how to swim.
Right, right.
I know how to swim.
That role.
I know how to swim very well, actually.
Well, I know this past year that I've had some really hard times because my, my position at work has changed, and I've had some significantly long hours at work. But, you know, if, if people want me to stay on, I'll be willing to do it, but I'd be more than happy to have somebody else take over if they want to.
I support Michelle's position.
Oh.
I said I support Michelle's position.
Of swimming and not being the chair.
No, that the board is presently constituted is, is fine.
Well, we will need a new vice chairman.
True, okay.
So, if you want to leave me as chairman, I'm, I'm more than happy to do it. I'm just letting you know that I, you know, this past year has been tough for me, that this coming year will probably be a little bit easier because of my hours, I'm a little more used to what I'm doing than, than I was after I was first voted on as chairman last year. But I'd be willing to do it, but it's up to the other members.
I understand. I think that the, one of the considerations on, on any board is that there has to be a reasonable institutional memory. And sitting on this board through the past year, we had three members who had long tenure on the board, Jeff, yourself, and Peter. Peter is now gone. John's come on, he's got a lot of experience in other boards, but not on this board. You're two years into it, I'm only a year into it. Jeff's now straddling two jobs plus a paying job on top of that. I think they pay you, don't they? So, at some point, you know, Jeff is probably gonna say, wait a minute here, so we're gonna lose another member with institutional memory. I really think we need someone in the chair who's got some institutional memory, so that's why I, and besides, I think you've done a decent job, so on top of that.
I agree, Walter.
He does a better job than when I was before the board 12 years ago. He's come a long way.
I was very nice to you. Mr. Barelli wouldn't think so, though.
No, I'd be happy to try vice chair, I'd be much more comfortable.
That's a much...
Second-in-command.
So, we have to vote on them one at a time, though?
Yeah.
So, there is a nomination. You're nominating?
Nominating you to stay on as chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, I will vote for Michelle as vice chair.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, Steve, you don't have to show up for the first three meetings and you have the right to...
So, yeah, right.
There you go.
Now, clerk is usually given to the newest member.
The junior member, I think that's...
Earn your stripes.
Yeah. So, I'll nominate John Waddleton as clerk of the planning board. Do I have a second on that?
Couldn't happen, we're better guys.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The job that is the least one. All right, let's get on the list.
It's not that bad.
Well, it's longer than usual. Usually, the top half comes down to here.
Yeah, you're right.
Twiz and found subdivision, okay, review the water booster station design revisions. We see some much nicer stuff here.
I know, look at the green.
Congratulations, Mr. Chipman. Carlos Quintel, I think you have a package, and the package basically looks at some of the items that we talked about the last time. We'll start with the easy one. There was some discussion or request to change the color. It was not, it was not in entirety of the board on the decision to go, but what, what I've included on the package that I believe you have would be the back page that actually at the bottom has a, all the available colors. And of the available colors, I believe green was one that was perhaps suggested, and we certainly can do that, we can pick any of the colors that you'd like there. The power company is not interested in, in the color as much as the actual ballards itself.
I think John, John would like to discuss all the colors with you.
Please, please go. As a secretary, take good notes, please.
Green is a great choice.
I think so, too. I think green was what everyone was leaning towards at the last meeting.
It seemed that way.
And you have the grass in there?
Okay, moving on to the next thing. Let's, let's go up here. We, we have shown, and I think what you see here is the, the four ballards are the, the dark spots. We've called for two-worded endemol only because that was part of the discussion, but we'd be happy to entertain any other, any other suggestion that may be equal. I think that by the, the density of, of the plant itself perhaps will hide the ballards. We, we in fact are providing the grass and up to the, to the path for the transformer. You can see here, this would be the, the grass on the, the grass strip along the roadway and the sidewalk. Which leaves us with one more item, and that item is whether or not that should be paved or gravel. The original permit, the original opinion of this board is that it be gravel. There's been some discussion about having it paved, and we'll go back to that in a second. But I want you, as, as we talk about this, to keep in mind that at least to this point, the back of sidewalk, this will be paved. I don't think it would be appropriate to have a piece of sidewalk that's paved, gravel, gravel, and then pavement, so...
No, you're right.
Let's say that this, this gets paved, so we're looking at this piece here as in fact the piece that would be, that would be paved for access. Reason for, for access to this, quite frankly, is some mechanical room. There's several pumps in there, and if, if one of them needs to be moved, you do want to provide access right to the door. That's not, not something that you can easily move around. So, it makes some sense to do that. I, I am not speaking for, for GPW. I did ask for a comment. I...
Did you get one?
As of right now, I do not have one.
Okay.
I have, my, the comment I had, I, let me rephrase that, I do have a comment, and the comment by, by Mr. McGee was that it's really Mr. McNulty's final decision. He happens to work from, from Mr. McGee, so I'm, I'm not, you know, and I, I know that the discussion that he perhaps is thinking about, we had out in the field, when we first talked about this in the field, there was a question about the potential of just paving up to, to this line, which is the fence line?
Yeah.
And then having a walk into the, to the door.
Self-applause here, though, right?
Yeah, I, the walk to the door doesn't make sense to me if you're gonna go to the fence. Quite frankly, I mean, we provided a double gate fence so that you could access the door of that, of that building. From my perspective, and I, I do understand why you might want to consider gravel versus pavement, I think pavement is the best way to go, but it will be your decision.
I'm for paving.
You have a pa, I was just gonna ask, who, who, who here is in favor of paving before we go?
I think so, I think so.
We are applauding gravel's disposition.
Okay, I think it's pretty much unanimous with that we're gonna go for paving, so if you have a comment?
My comment is only that I spoke with Bob McGee today, he stopped by because he wanted me to relay to the planning board what his thoughts were, and his thoughts were basically what you had said, is that he doesn't care either way. You know, he's, he's concerned about paving the sidewalk, and that's been addressed. So, beyond that, it's really just the pleasure of the planning board.
Now, what kind of standards is this going to be paved to? Is it gonna be paved to the standard of a primary road, or is this gonna be paved to a standard of a driveway?
I would say a driveway, certainly not more than that. I would say a driveway, certainly not more than that. I, I don't think there would be, I don't think it'd be justified to do, it's not a roadway.
Well, that's true, that's true.
You're not going to see the vehicle traffic that you would see on a road. So it, it, it's a driveway. It's only a seven, eight, seven and a half, eight-foot driveway. It's not-
Okay, if you, if you let us know what the standards are that you're going to construct it to, so that we have a knowledge as to what you're going to be constructing.
Um-
How much subsurface?
Two and a half inches, two and a half inches and one and a half.
Gravel below.
The gravel below, I'd like to leave what's there. And, and the reason I'd like to leave what's there-
That doesn't really tell us much.
It doesn't, it doesn't fall, it doesn't fall in pure s-
Is it a foot? Eight inches?
Oh, we get more than that. We get probably two to three feet of, of that crushed stone.
Oh, okay.
Um, that's how that was brought up to grade. Certainly, I don't, I don't, it doesn't qualify as, as dense graded. It's not your standard typical section on a roadway, but it certainly is acceptable if you, if you pave over it. Certainly for the vehicle, vehicle traffic you're going to see, it's not, I, I don't see that there's anything in jeopardy.
So you're going to put an inch and a half and then an inch? Is that the way it's going to work?
Typically, it would be one and a half, one and a half, at least.
That sounds acceptable. Does anyone have any objection to that?
That's fine.
John, do you have?
No.
Okay.
I have a question on the landscaping, though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have another question, too.
I'd like to see a little bit more than just two rhododendrons, maybe two clusters of rhododendrons, but-
Rhododendrons get really, really big.
Depending on what-
Just as long as they're not PGM.
Right, depending on what you buy.
Tiny ones in there.
Depending on what you buy.
Can you give the big boys?
That's all I'm saying.
The intent, as I suggested the last time, and you can make that part of your final decision, is that the, the reason or the sizing is based on the, the height of the ballard, not, you know, I can buy a little potted plant and hope that it grows in 10 years. That's not the intent. It'd be to, to plant something that, that will cover the ballards as you walk or drive from either side of that, that station. And that, we're talking about a four-foot high-
That's what I want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There you go. Write that down.
You don't want those little ones that, that take like 15 years to get this big.
Right, and then that's as big as they ever get.
Right.
Or if you get those-
They're expensive.
Well, the standard, standard rhododendrons as opposed to one of the-
Well, I, actually, the small leaf is better in full sun.
Is this in full sun?
Yeah. The small leaf rhododendron's better in full sun. The large leaf are shade, but-
Small leaf, but big.
A big, small-leaved plant.
A big plant with small leaf.
Yes.
Question, on the, the two ballards that are close to the walk, it looks like one of them is actually in the walkway.
It's, it's, it's not. It may just be a, a drawing thing, but it's, it's right on the edge of the-
It is on the, right on the-
It's on the edge of the, yeah. I think if, I, I do have the pictures, but it's right on what would be the edge of-
It almost looks like you're going parallel to the transformer, and I guess the question-
That's correct.
Should you, should you be instead parallel to the sidewalk, so it doesn't look like it's kind of-
Well, the ballards are already there.
Ballards are there, yeah.
You just have to change the cover.
They're bright yellow, as you may remember.
That's right. Well, I didn't know if they were putting brand-new ones. I guess they're just covering what's there.
She's clear and dear and close to-
That's right. My drawing. Yeah, which we were talking about.
I think the-
See, we were talking about something very different than a rhododendron.
Well, here, I think this gives you a better perspective as you look up the street.
Yeah, let me check.
They're, they're far enough behind us.
Yeah, okay, I can see the light, sure.
It's more a drafting issue than anything else.
Fair enough, yeah.
I clearly tried to make those bolder and wider than they might necessarily be, just to be able to, to show up on the picture.
Yeah, understood. You got at least a foot, if not more.
Yeah. It's reasonable to me.
Do we remember the surfacing material on the four-foot walk to the open space?
That was intended to be, was always called out as, as a gravel access drive, access walk.
I think that's probably correct. I just want to make sure that we were-
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And how did that access end up in terms of the as-built, if you will, versus what we had discussed in terms of where it is?
It's, it's pretty much where it is. It runs through the back of, of, of the, the wall.
The open space?
It opens to the open space. From here on up, there's no walk.
You have some slope there, right?
Yes. Yeah, the, the slope is pretty much to here. This, this would be an up, it would be a, an up gradient, if you will, to this point, and then it flattens out. What it does back there, I honestly couldn't tell you.
The conservation, Carlos, still waiting for the deed for that access land.
I will pass that on. I'm sure that before the, I, I would suspect that that probably has something to do with the acceptance of the street and whatever else, closing. And lot releases and things like that.
You're talking about further up?
No, we have no access to the open space yet. Still owned by Howard Bailey. The deed was never transferred to us.
Well, there's, there's a couple places to, to get access. One is through here, and then you could, at least in theory, you can walk along the back of the property.
What's the new one, Betsy, that we determined the new access for the open space? We're waiting for the deed.
Oh, just the one in behind the stables?
Yeah, that one's further, so that one's further up, yeah. That's the only one that's in question, right? This one, it's fine, right? I mean, this, this one, I don't think there was any question about-
I can't answer that question at all. I'm not familiar with it. I know that we had a, something from Hong Kong.
Yeah, about that, yeah. Some of the open space things.
Right. So anybody else have any other comments?
Nope, looks good.
Okay, this all looks fine to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think everyone agrees with, with your recommendation.
Thank you.
Oh, were they?
That's why you agreed with them.
I hope you agree with them.
As I drove by on Maple Street, and I turned, and I looked up, I went, "Damn, that's a horrible-looking entrance to a subdivision."
Stop calling me Tom.
I still get worked about you.
It's at the point where I do it on purpose now.
This is an active, active comment. Clearly, that, that pump station was intended to be elsewhere.
Well, it was, it was not supposed to be obvious. It was supposed to be set way back so that it wasn't obvious at all.
It was going to be on the ground. Things changed.
Well, this is a good comment.
Actually, this is, this is better. I agree, but obviously, from a perspective of, of your eyesight, yeah, this is going to stand up. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Seventeen Frederickson Road.
I looked for that. Nice pump station at the entrance.
That's got a plan right here.
And Gino, I know he sent something out, and I, again, I left it in my car.
Okay, it's in your package.
Is it in our package?
Yeah, it is.
Didn't we have another, we had another memo for him, too, though? Oh, but he repeats the constant comment.
What am I missing here? What am I not seeing?
There's this one page here.
A one-pager.
Ah, okay, thanks. Now, shouldn't we have the easement before we sign the A and R?
So you can sign it and hold it.
Well, that's true.
This is the same issue that come up with your friend with the V email-
Right, that's right.
-plan, but no documentation recorded. The docu, the recorded documentation gives all the parameters of the easement, and what restrictions, et cetera.
Sure, sure.
So, sure.
Can you say, why, why would somebody do this?
To create an estate lot?
What?
To create an estate lot?
It's an unbilled lot. To join that to another lot?
Mm-hmm. I think eventually they-
There's three of them.
-want to combine it with the abutting, some abutting lots to create an estate lot.
That's what I remember in the initial letter or whatever that came in.
There's three owners.
We haven't gotten any of the other plans yet, though.
So we're going either side, combining that to create one big-
I think it's going from the rear to those lots.
It is.
With the frontage on the roll drive.
And would that be to deny the connection that they're looking to do from Knoll over to Frederickson?
What's that again?
No, there was no connection involved.
They couldn't do a connection with just-
Where was the connection of that?
Oh, I know what you're thinking.
That we were looking at that.
That's, that's different.
No, that was the other-
That's another, that's someone else that's connecting through to the bottom of your street.
Right.
Yeah.
It wasn't this one, it was that one.
That's Matulowicz property.
I guess I'm just, are they strategizing to block some other potential development?
No, they're each getting a piece of non-builable land to put it together to sell to make a profit.
They get a third each?
That's correct.
Aren't there houses on these two?
Yeah, but they're each taking a part of their land that's not usable and combining it to make a builable lot.
So then they'll divide their lot, they'll divide their lot?
Yes.
And then that would make-
Put together-
Have enough frontage on either here or here.
Right.
So you'll see two more A and Rs.
Yeah, and then they'll have an estate lot.
And then you'll see a special permit for an estate lot after that.
But wait a minute. You can't create estate lots, can you?
Oh, I knew you were going to say that.
How did you know that? You can't create estate lots. They have to already exist.
That's Walter's, that's Walter's comment about the, the long history.
That, that's not before us now. We, we have, we have an A and R plan that has frontage in areas.
Nevertheless, that comment ought to be passed back to the people, so they understand what the judge says.
The ordinance as it stands today.
Well, yeah, yeah, but if, if they're planning on doing something else, they're going to be caught.
They are.
And then I guess that, yeah, the question is, we, you know, can we sign, we can or can we not sign off on it with this landscape?
Well, we can hold it until we have the easement in hand.
I got one.
Now, where is this supposed to be going? This way or this way?
It's going to go forward. And what they're saying, they'll cover the portion here, they'll cover the portion here. Great.
Well, wait, isn't this the parcel? Or is this the new parcel?
This is the original parcel. They're dividing it in halves.
Right.
Stephen, there's three parcels that are all on frontage on Frederickson Street, and one of them has access to the back road.
Oh, I got it wrong. It's these two. I guess they're going to join these. Is that right?
Oh, they're planning on joining these?
I don't know.
No, I think it would be a piece of this to the portion of that one.
Oh, but we're only dealing with this one right now.
Yes, the first piece of the puzzle.
You say we'll see a next, an A and R here, probably next, and then-
There'll be pieces here and there for the connection right there.
Yeah, so they'll just have, they have to get their quiet circle.
So if they, if they can't create an estate lot, why bother?
I don't think they knew the rule. Well, I mean, if- That's got the same criteria as the affordable lots that we put into effect about five, seven years ago, that affordable lots can have frontage and other limitations, but they can't be newly created.
Now, if you sign it, which I think you're required to do-
Well, yeah, because what they're doing is perfectly illegitimate.
They could just not record it.
Yeah, right.
If they, in fact, discover their thoughts were an error. But we, we should sign it. You can hold it until they record that easement, but I think if forced, you'd have to simply give them a plan there, there. They're showing, the, the only thing you can judge an A and R on is, does it have frontage and does it have area? Anything tangen-, even though they've represented they're giving some kind of a landscape easement out.
If there's, if there's, in fact, an estate lot, they have to come back for a special permit for estate law.
They do, yeah, so we could tie it up then.
That's what, that's what comes out.
Oh, that's true.
It would be kind to let the applicants know beforehand of that-
It would.
-bugging the laws, save them some money.
Before they spend.
Yep.
All right, but meanwhile, I'm going to make a motion. Do we have to move to sign it? Does an A and R require that?
We have to accept it and then endorse it.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the A and R plan submitted by Dan and Susan Winslow for the property at Seventeen Frederickson Road. However, we will hold. I guess we, I guess we accept it first.
And hold the endorsed.
Then that's a separate vote?
No, it could be the same, the same motion.
But then we're going to hold the endorsed plan until the 30-foot landscape easement is properly recorded and defined as it should be.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we can sign. What else is there?
Someone should send, I don't know, is it that come from Ray?
I'll send, I'll send Mr. Winslow.
He, I'm, oh, no, no, he was not on the board when the estate law, law came through. Okay, the review detention pond fencing modification.
Is it a letter?
Is there?
Oh, yes, the color of the fence, right?
No, 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 it's a different kind of fence.
Different kind of fence.
Coloring.
Oh, I thought it was colored, just colored.
It's a damn chain-link fence.
Black chain-link fence from a white PVC fence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may address the board.
Yes.
I did take a look at the plans to see what was specified. The only specification on those plans was for a PVC, white PVC fence, and it pertained to just the dumpster. There was nothing on there with a specification for the detention pond.
Were we doing landscaping around the detention pond?
It just said, it just said, "Security fencing."
PVC isn't chain-linked.
No, it's, it's-
No, it's not, but it was a white six-foot PVC fence around the dumpster.
I thought we had a lot of landscaping around the pond.
Well, why do, why do they say, they themselves say that it's a white PVC fence around the drainage pond?
I think because there was no other specification in the plans other than the white PVC fence.
Well, you sure it's not something that the architecture, you know, we have the design review committee sometimes through emails? I don't know. It may not be recorded on the plan.
I checked my notes.
We didn't see anything.
If they, red and black, if they get on the colonial fence, there is a beautiful PVC in vital roof tone fence that is brown that blends in, you'll see with the woodwork, the, the woods that would go better, I think, than a black one.
Where is this?
On a colonial fence.
So it's right across the street, which would be nice to kind of tie in the...
Yeah, exactly.
Area, yeah. I like that idea, to, you know, take a look at, I mean, I...
What's the point of the fence, if I may ask?
I don't know, we usually try to use landscaping to keep people out of these detention bases. But, but, you know, the thing is, I have black chain link fence around my pool also. I have wood facing the street and the rest of it is all black chain link, because I was told it'll blend into the landscape. So I'm out there all the time saying, "Damn, I hate this black chain link fence."
It's not blending in for you.
No, it doesn't blend in.
Well, what's the purpose of it, it must be safety, I mean, that's...
It is safety.
Sure, I mean, that's what he's...
Are you required to have it though, or could you do it through landscaping?
No, no, I think most places don't have it, you don't have any link, any fencing around any detention pond.
Yeah, there's no horizontal elements, so it's...
I prefer landscaping too.
Okay.
Unless they're thinking that there's a parking lot right next to it.
Do they have a more sophisticated, uh, septic system with things that could be destroyed by kids?
You think?
Is their septic system more vulnerable to vandalism, Tom?
I don't think so.
That's a big, that's a big drainage pond, correct, is my recollection.
Is it gonna hold water for, uh, a day?
I thought it was gonna be dry.
I forget the drawdown time, it has to be within 72 hours, but I, that's pretty sandy there, my guess is, it's probably...
Used to be a huge sand pit.
Yeah, so it probably won't hold anything.
My question is, is there a requirement?
No.
No.
You the town, state, federal, to fence off?
You have to put, you have to put pond trees around detention basins.
Okay.
I believe the, the planning board rules and regs have requirement for fencing detention ponds with over two feet of water in. But I don't think it says the type of fence.
That's right, if, if it's in there for more than 72 hours or something like that, right?
No, it just, it says, I believe it's just one and two feet of water. You can draw it, that's another standard, you can take up to 72 hours to draw it down. But on this site, my guess would be it'll draw down in 12 hours, 16 hours, some of it's sand.
I, I mean, something like this, maybe a bad idea, I'm sure John will tell me, but on occasion, we've kind of allowed things to go forward and to get some...
Thanks, thanks, Matt.
To get some perspective after things are in place, recognizing that at any time, we could specify the fence.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, trying to get some sense as to the, you know, the water, how much water in these drainage pits and all that stuff. Work with the, uh, developer, you know, in a year, let's say, in terms of making a final decision.
Why don't we ask them to come in and see what their reason is for having fence?
It's a landscape plan.
Yeah, I mean, unless they're in a hurry, I mean, maybe we can defer this, but...
Yeah, look at, look at how heavily planted it is all the way around it.
But it does show fence, doesn't it?
This is a six-foot-high security fence, and it starts around the entire perimeter.
That's just the back, isn't it?
Six-foot-high, see, it's pointed all the way to this line with the X in it.
To here, right? Oh, is this it?
See the line with the X, goes all the way around.
So it shows a six-foot-high fence.
So I guess he's just asking if the material for that fence can be chain link.
Yeah, instead of PVC.
Well, do we have a, anything that tells us what these are?
The bushes?
Yeah.
And then this one specifically says that's a, a six-foot-high vinyl fence enclosure. This one just says a security fence. And their specifications are, they should all be here, are they all on the drawings?
I'm sure it's white pine.
There's all different kinds, so there should be a key that tells us what the, what's being planted, but I don't see it here. Yeah, but it doesn't tell us what all these things are.
It gives you, yeah, they have labels to them all. So the FF is the Frasier fir.
Yeah.
The NS is the Norway spruce, the WP is the white pine.
So it's the...
So it's really a combination of those three.
They started off with all white pines, we suggested a mixture, and they put that in.
They seem to be dense enough where I don't...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're not gonna see, uh, you know, probably the, the black chain link will probably be just fine in this location. This, this looks pretty dense.
The question is, back on this side, if you're ever coming down here, would you be able to see it from Hill Street this way?
Yeah, what, what's, what is in this area here, what is that? I can't read it from here.
They have a drainage rail there also.
In which case, I still think black chain link, so you can see through it and see your landscape, it might still be the better solution.
Better than white, I think.
Yeah, I do.
Well, there's buildings and everything in this direction, I know that this is pretty dense over here.
I think that's an auto body, right?
Yeah.
I'd be fine with going with the black chain link there.
Or brown, I don't care.
I mean, you think that there's a cost difference between the...
John, what color should...
About green chain link?
Color, no.
Probably doesn't really matter.
I'm sure there's a difference in terms of materials.
You won't even see it.
Famous last words, famous last words.
Steve, he's staring at it all day and it's done.
He's unusual.
I have it around my pool too, and I, I do think it kind of disappears.
Especially after two beers.
Some people are more sensitive to...
Sangria, sangria in the summer.
Sangria makes the black chain link go away. Yeah, 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 this is de- really densely planted, so I don't think that it's gonna really matter whether or not it happens. Yeah, I guess we can let them know that the black chain link is gonna be okay.
Sangria?
Yeah.
Is that a minor modification we need to vote on, or what do we need to do, Steve?
Yes.
Well, honestly, it really was never specified.
No, we don't really...
It says it's six-foot-high.
It says it's a security fence, doesn't say what material it is, it doesn't say what color it is.
So this isn't a modification, this is something that we can say, go ahead and do it, we'll catch it in the ass builds.
It's okay.
Yeah.
If anyone have any shot... No exception taken.
You're, you're, I'll say?
Ray gets to deliver some good news.
Yeah.
You can't get too wild.
Not at Los Angeles. Discuss, talk, cost to complete Hampton Road, what?
Mr. Chairman, the cost to complete Hampton Road is $175,250.
Okay, where's this, where's Hampton Road?
Jefferson Street, near Berkshire.
Okay.
I joined Berkshire, actually.
Yeah, sure, I live right there.
The subdivision improvements such as they are were properly installed. Nothing's happened in many years out there, the area's overgrown, there are saddlings growing into the road and everything right now, but the, the work that was done remains fine. The first 200 or so feet of the road was completed with curbing and planting strips and everything else. The remainder of the road is just completed to binder course, including the utilities under it. So the cost complete, particularly that remaining segment there, is $175,250.
Isn't this currently blocked off, don't they have a Jersey barriers blocking it?
They do.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I think he's gonna start marking them though.
Oh, okay.
How many lots, uh, would be?
Ten?
Yeah, I was gonna guess ten, yeah.
Yeah, something in that order of magnitude.
All right, does, uh, does this, um, estimate look okay to everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Trees, 42 trees. All right, do we have a motion to set the bond?
Motion to set a bond for Hampton Drive in the amount of $175,250 going from Station 2+20 to Station 11+25.
Second?
Second, just to Hampton, Drive to Hampton Road, sorry, just technical detail.
All those in favor?
Aye. Excuse me, I just gotta, nature, I'll be right back.
Let me see, T-Mobile, review and approve special permit decision.
Okay, so we voted on this already?
Yeah, this is what we already voted on, right. Do we have a decision on this?
Yeah, sure.
Is it right here?
We just haven't had a quorum in order to vote, to vote on the decision.
I'm not sure we do right now.
I think we, we will...
Walter has a room here.
He'll be back.
Walter can read it quickly when he gets back.
You guys have seen this a few times, though.
Have we?
You have.
I remember reading this.
It's been in the packet for about the last three weeks.
That doesn't mean we read it.
That's very true.
That's right, I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I don't remember us having any issues with this.
No, we had no issues.
We asked, we asked several questions, but I recall there being any issues.
And of course, they sent someone who couldn't answer one question that we asked. Yeah, smart of them.
So in terms of the, uh, this performance bond, how does that work procedurally? In terms of us ensuring that that gets posted? Looking at G, page four of six.
Do we usually post a bond on these? Do they usually post a bond on these? I don't remember.
Where'd you post a bond?
No, I don't, I don't know.
I, I didn't expect to see it, but I'm seeing it, so I'm asking.
I haven't gotten to it yet, but...
I know they have to still landscape, correct?
I think that's general procedure, 'cause if I remember the, um, flagpole, do they have to post a bond?
You mean for the other tower?
Yeah.
I don't remember. Because that was a renewal, well, that's what, this is a modification, right?
Is there any work that has to be done?
This bond is being held for the purpose, for the sole purpose of removal of the wireless communication facility in the event that the applicant or any successors fail to meet any conditions of the special permit or fail to repair any hazard presented by the facility following the period of 90 days.
So is it already in place?
In place.
It's in place.
Do we have a copy of it?
The bond is in place?
That's what it says.
It's, it's maintain.
I can't verify that.
It shall maintain a performance bond.
Yeah, you could read this either way, but I...
I, I didn't.
I hope you're correct, 'cause it should be in place, I guess.
Let's see, you keeping a record of all the, uh, sort of like catalog of all the bonds that are outstanding and, uh, so this would be another one, this would be just a surety bond that, I'm assuming, that's, uh, got us listed as a, uh, involved party, and we just keep it, and normally they update those when the, uh, time expires.
They do this all over, all over the country.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I, I would have some concern about a bond that, that is capable of being, of expiring. But it's 10 years from now, nobody's gonna ever track that.
That was the problem they had years ago, Tom, there was no tracking of the bonds. Years ago, the insurance company would notify the people listed on the bonds when the bond was expiring, and I don't think that's the case now. So now it becomes a matter of you tracking your bonds and the, uh, expiration dates and making sure they get renewed.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, and I don't know whether the board would wanna do it, this, I don't think would be subject to the subdivision control law requirements for forms of sureties. So you could require a, I don't know what the term is, not a revocable bond, but a bond in perpetuity, I don't know what the legal term is.
Automatically renewing.
Yeah, or you could require cash, you could require something that's permanent.
Why would we even care? I mean, i- if someone's gonna abandon it, I'd be more concerned about the, the fact that there's a great big antenna there than these little antennas for cell phones that are attached to it.
This is what it's there for, in case we have to take it down.
I mean, I don't know whether 10,000 is enough to do it.
Take the little antenna off.
Take the whole thing, I don't know.
No, I'm sure it's...
Oh, no, we would never be able to take that antenna down for $10,000.
But, I'm just saying, I mean...
Well, I think this is the second carrier on this thing, so there's probably another bond for 10,000.
I think what happens, Steve, is, is you end up in a legal battle.
I think, isn't this the second carrier?
I own the antenna, the tower, you have an antenna, and Jeff has a, a set of antennas. In order to take that tower down, we gotta make sure that both you and Jeff, who own the antennas, take your stuff off first. I think that's what, why the bond is there.
Nothing else that pays for the legal to, to get them to do what they need to do, right?
Is this at the radio station?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't realize I was opening panels.
Well, when does it say it expires, that's what I'm wondering.
It doesn't say it doesn't. It, it fails to say it does not expire.
But don't we require in our bylaws that the bond be in place for the, the life of the antenna?
All right, is T-Mobile the current, is, is this a new sub lessy, for lack of a better term?
No, no, it's the same sub lessy.
They're just replacing their, their existing equipment.
Yeah, they're putting some additional...
The antenna's got old, their only generation technology.
2G, we gotta get up to 12G.
Okay. So supposedly, there's a bond there?
Yeah. We can check that in the office and make sure that the bond is in place.
Yeah. What if, what if you could check and see if it's expiring?
Should we wait before this, this whole issue of the bond is corrected before we sign this?
I think we have to make a decision, I think we're at the, we're...
Oh, are we?
I, I, I'm okay, I'm okay with it, Steve, I think, I wouldn't hold it on.
Unless we wanna add the language that says a bond in the amount of $10,000 for the life of the antennas, or whatever.
What did, what did you call it, Ray, you had a phrase?
Automatically renewing.
Automatically renewing.
Well, it says that the bond is gonna be held in escrow under the terms accepted by the applicant and the planning board and the town of Norfolk Treasurer slash Collector. So I'm assuming those terms spell out the condition of the bonds. It's not here as part of this decision, it should be under those terms.
Under the original decision.
Whatever those terms are, those terms are held in three different places, they're held by, or two different places, by us and the town of Norfolk Treasurer slash Collector.
I think you're safe.
That's correct.
All right.
We'll check on it.
Does anyone wanna make a motion to, um, endorse this decision number 2014-02, special permit?
Yeah, I move to endorse the special permit number 2014-02 for T-Mobile Northeast LLC for the antennas at 100 points for...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have one that you want us to sign, or is that...
So we're all in favor, John abstained, because he hasn't been present for the public hearing.
Oh, so you wanna be the agent for the planning board, huh?
I don't think he gets a choice.
Might help. So if you're our agent, you can go on property and everything else to review things as, as our agent, okay.
As applications come in, I can talk with the applicant and go through what they're supposed to do, maybe avoid some of the coming to the planning board not prepared, um, maybe make things a little bit more streamlined.
Be careful, though, because, uh, a lot of times, if, if you give an opinion on something, you get back to the board, they don't agree at all with what you, what your opinion is. All right, so I'll make a motion to, um, to assign Jeff, no, not Jeff, Ray.
Tom.
You're really getting me worried here.
I've got a new name too, Jeff.
You have to, to be part of the board.
Yeah. To assign, uh, Ray, our new town planner, as an agent of the, of the planning board, do I have a second on that?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dementia starts early.
I think dementia starts early.
Yeah, no, no, that's the big thing about me calling him Tom that goes back six months.
Oh, yeah, you haven't been here long enough to know. Called me Tom about six times in the last few months.
I think it goes back more than three months, I think it goes back six months.
No mistake.
All right, review and approve the site plan and special permit decisions.
Oh, no, no progress.
No progress.
No.
All right.
So you, just, just to be clear, so PSC has not been contacted to...
Correct.
Visit the site to follow...
Yeah, we, we did a detailed memo on what needed to be fixed on the site, we have not had communication...
I hope they're not planning on doing work without you going and reviewing it.
I did put a call into Mr. Di Martino last night, and he, I didn't hear back from him because the extension he granted us is expiring today, so, anyway.
How about the Essex Street bond release?
What?
Well, wait a minute, do we have to go back to, we have to go back to this?
Yeah.
You can't move in T-Mobile, right?
We have to go back to, because there's a deadline for us.
But he hasn't requested anything to, um, to extend it, right?
He hasn't, thank you, Michelle.
Without his request to extend it, does that mean that he's automatically approved if the planning board doesn't deny the, or...
He still has to be, have it extended, as far as we're concerned, it's expired unless he gets it extended.
He's formally extended it.
Well, I think what Tom is gonna say is that he might have constructive approvals, that's what I'm worried about. Yeah, we can't take that chance.
Well, we've had other site plans expire, people have come back in at a later date and asked to have them extended.
I th- I think if you don't have a request to extend and we're at the deadline, you have to deny.
Can he make it, um, by telephone, e- email, can he, can he reach him?
She's already tried. Well, it's not, um, we don't have a public hearing on this, right?
Public hearing is closed.
And this was just...
We haven't filed the decision.
Well, it's, I, I, I think you have to... Well, it's, I, I think you have to deny. If he comes in with the, with the fixes to the site, then you could waive whatever and waive fees or whatever for him to get underway again, but I think you
Maybe he decided to just
If there, if there's no request to extend, I think you have to deny.
Because this could go on forever, Steve.
Yes, that is true.
Could you reinstate the application if he comes in?
Doesn't he have to reapply?
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, he could, she should reapply and you can waive whatever fees or whatever, so.
But we have to have hearings.
Well, it's inconvenient, but we're at a point that if you don't deny it, I think he has constructive approval, so you should deny it.
I mean, I, I try to be supportive of development to a point, but I think by the same token, you know, there's a certain protocol that I think we're going to have to be more rigorous in terms of trying to ensure that applicants follow, and in this case, you know, the applicant didn't follow that protocol all the way back to the original, you know, surveillance inspections and such. And now, you know, where, where we're at right now, where, you know, we've asked him to grant us an extension, to give him more time, and I'm not surprised that this has happened, that we're here tonight in this unfortunate situation. I think we need to deny. I think we need to deny because if we don't do that, I am concerned whether it's this meeting or at some point in the future, there's going to be constructive approval.
I think that goes also if somebody doesn't formally write and tell you to continue. Because if you continue on your own without something in writing and they said, I assume the meeting was being closed and the deadline's up, we've got constructive approval. There should be something in writing every time they, they continue a hearing.
Okay, so I agree that, I guess we're going to have to deny. Unfortunately, I would like to have this go forward, but, Michelle, do you have anything to add to that?
I think part of our job is, yeah, part of our job is to enforce, and we were giving him every opportunity, reaching out to him. Flags go up for me. So the flag's going up, you know, why? Why isn't he getting in touch with Tom? He's, we've reached across the table. Why is he not calling Betsy back? Flags are just going up, and that's part of our job is to
Okay, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion on this one. I'm going to make a motion to deny approval for the site plan for 240 Dedham Street. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to, to deny the special permit decisions for 240 Dedham Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So, Betsy.
Get those two motions.
So both motions have been made and we're all in agreement with John abstaining that we have to deny.
Okay, Essex Street bond release. Do we have any numbers on this bond release?
No, it's, it was accepted at town meeting, right?
What do you mean, numbers?
You have to release the bond.
Oh, this is just, oh, okay, so they just don't want us to release the money? The money's already been released. We just have to tell the treasurer to release it to the, yeah, okay.
So we've accepted the road, the town's accepted the road now. It's just a formality, giving them their bond back.
Okay, I'll make a motion to release bond number B21862493 in the amount of $191,000 for Essex Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've already set the next, next meeting. Consultant contracts are due to expire June 30th? Do we have to discuss that tonight?
No.
The next time we meet is after that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but, you know, in most instances, even though it's not a signed one, it will just continue on, right? Is that the way, it's happened before?
Do we have to decide about Gino with Ray now as our agent?
You extended us to, and Gino, to the 30th. So you should probably at least do it.
Gino is not going to expire June 30th, is he? Isn't he expiring later than that?
I don't think so. I think they were both on the same day.
They're both expiring.
I think we had extended Gino until we had Ray here for a little while and then to decide.
Yeah, we still need Gino.
Yeah, we definitely have to have Gino around for a little while, at least.
Sort out, Ray's got quite a bit on his plate here.
So to keep them on beyond June 30th, are we at a point where we need to put another RFP out, Betsy? Or can we just extend contracts for another year?
My suggestion would be to engage in some discussion with the Board of Health regarding the engineering consultant. Because we have talked previously, we haven't done it yet, about the joint RFP.
Yes, we did talk about it.
And this is probably a good time to, to do that. Now, we may need to extend here for the sake of a month or, or two. So I would, you know, encourage you, Steve, if you're in agreement
I would have, I would go out to 90 days, yeah. I would definitely go out for 90 days. And then talk to the Board of Health, right?
Just for your information, the Board of Health has engaged us for the next three years.
Okay.
We should just look through the RFP process.
Okay, so let's just stick with the 90 days for the time being, and then we'll, we'll have conversations about it because it's starting to get late. So I'll make a motion to extend the, the contracts for Gino Carlucci and Tom Houston for 90 days beyond the expiration date of June 30th.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Walter, did you review the meeting minutes?
Yes, I have reviewed these and I think you
This is your job from now on.
Needs to review them at the moment and then we'll make a motion to accept them. So if you want to take a minute to read them, fine. If not, we can accept them as
If you've reviewed them, I would
If you've already reviewed them, I'm not going to bother reading them. You should be able to catch.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the planning board meeting on Tuesday, May 20th, 2014, as presented by the secretary.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, the full town meeting warrant articles. I think, I know that a couple of people were, were there last night and
What has happened?
The, the Board of Selectmen had a roundtable discussion about potential zoning changes for the Southwood property. Well, there's several zoning changes that they want to, that they want to put forward. And part of it was things that Ray had caught that he, he would like to bring forward. But the concentration right now is on the Southwood property. And finally, last night, someone said, oh, I just noticed that the zoning bylaw study committee really doesn't have the kind of authority that we've been giving it, which I'd been saying all along that really it's a, it's a planning board job to do what they were doing, but the, so now they want to put together a, a special board that is not, a special committee, a working committee with representatives from all the boards to talk about specifically the ability to have the zoning changes brought forward at a town meeting that a developer would require to develop that person.
Does the committee set?
The committee is, well, we're going to set our recommended person tonight. And
So related to that was, I know we talked about tonight maybe also discussing the, the ideas that a, is it going to change for the planning board members to go from elected to appointed?
No, there was no discussion.
That's years after. They have to do a charter committee for that, which takes minimum of two years.
So
The only discussion really at that meeting that was on the, on the
Southwood.
Pardon me?
On Southwood, right?
Yeah.
Well, yes, but I mean, on the meeting where this issue came up that was, was really on the zoning bylaw study committee, not on the planning board.
Would we try and impact any of the recent changes that zoning went through that none of us were in favor of?
Well, I know that at least one of the members of the Board of Selectmen, not, not the, the person that's sitting next to me here, had said something about bringing one of those forward again. But, so someone would like, someone, at least from that board, would like to readdress them, some of those issues, but
You may be correct. I just don't recall that, so there was some discussion.
No, 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 this isn't last night. This is after town meeting. You know, this is a conversation
Oh, it's a side conversation, okay, because I didn't, I didn't recall that.
So that's why I'm not naming names. I'm not saying anything, but I, I just know that at least one member of the Board of Selectmen was, was thinking of maybe trying to bring some of that forward again.
You actually have trouble naming names.
What's that?
Yeah, you'd say the name, but it'd be the wrong name.
The wrong name.
And I guess just to clarify, the, you know, Michelle, you asked a question about elected versus appointed. So, you know, what Walter said in terms of zoning bylaw study committee, you know, I'm not sure in terms of that conversation, but, you know, that's come up in the context of, you know, difficulty which, you know, the town has had, really recruiting people, you know, convincing people to run for elected office. I mean, we had
We haven't had any vacancies, have we?
Well, I mean, we would have had vacancy and
Well, no one ran against me either, but
So, I guess, you know, never say never.
I cared, and they all cared.
But not enough.
So I guess, you know, whether it's necessary to, to have, you know, appointed members or some number of appointed members versus elected, that's kind of a separate conversation. I mean, we have had some degree of success where, you know, we reach out to people and try to, you know, convince them to run and, you know, tell them that they'll, you know, get the support of people who are involved in the town. And so, you know, that's really the extent of the conversation. So there's really nothing, no significant move afoot to, to do anything in terms of changing from elected to appointed. So just to put that to rest.
So there are two people that I thought would have been excellent to represent this.
Who's going to make up the committee? One person from planning board?
One person from the planning board, so
Who else is going to be on the committee?
Well, there'll be someone, maybe, is it one or two from the Board of Selectmen?
Well, I think we're all going to try to participate depending on, you know, the schedule of the meetings and such. So I don't think we're going to have a particular representative.
But the ad hoc committee is, we're asking for representatives from each board.
Correct.
So we really have to vote on a representative of our board.
Yeah, I think what the Board of Selectmen is, is looking for is the recommendation, you know, from each board for their representative on the working group, basically.
And then what other boards? ConCon?
Yeah, all the land use boards. They're all the land use boards. So there are two people that popped right into my mind, and they're sitting on, they're flanking us on either side here. Now, Walter has already told us that he's not going to be available at the beginning when it starts, when it starts forming.
I'm tied up doing the minutes.
She makes it really easy.
That was a good one. So, so unless you're really interested, are you really interested in doing it?
No, I don't think I have the knowledge on the zoning side.
I think that, that John would be very good in this.
My time is just kind of limited, that's all.
Your time is limited?
Yeah.
It's, it's easier for you than it is for me, because I'd have to come out of Boston for it. And I'm not sure about you, Michelle. I mean, if, if you want to do it, you're more than welcome to take the job if, if John doesn't want to.
I mean, I just think you would bring so much more
I think so, too. I think so. No, he's very good at this.
I'm in minutes, too. I would do it if you wanted to, but as I said, I won't be back until the 5th of July. So it's, you can choose to ask John in that case, and I'm fine with that.
So I guess, just for objective information, I think, you know, we're looking at a period of about six weeks or so to work with in terms of meetings and probably a few meetings with the developer. So the next six weeks are critical in order to get something to the point where we can move on it quickly enough before the warrant closes for the town meeting. And I guess, I'm not sure if it's come up, but let me, let me clarify. And the reason that timing is critical is because the, the buyer, the owner of the property, Mr. Vallone of Hoboken, something, maybe Realty, some company, he has basically an escape clause, if you will, in his agreement with the archdiocese that if the zoning is satisfactory by a date, I believe it's in
February.
February, that he basically walks away from that land purchase. And so, at least for the foreseeable future, you know, nothing happens there. And I, just to be very clear, you know, and I'll speak for the Board of Selectmen because we discussed it. You know, we're just looking for folks to be open-minded to the possibility of this being an opportunity to get that land remediated and get something, something constructed. You know, certainly something that has a commercial component, you know, would be desirable from, you know, a revenue standpoint. And you can understand that from the developer's standpoint, the applicant, or eventual, eventual applicant, that he would like to see more in the way of residential. Now, you know, I'm sure part of that is he's got to recoup his expenses for the remediation because it's going to be fairly costly to remediate that property. And there are some, there's been some work done and some estimates have been made. So there's quite a bit of work to do in a short period of time. So, you know, Walter, you know, has done a great job with the EDC and such, but I think his concern, you know, about, you know, missing probably a couple of meetings here, you know, it could be, you know, it could be a significant factor. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a six-month project, but this is a six-week project.
So, are you interested, John?
It's good training for Michelle to
Are you interested in this, John?
I honestly don't know if I have the time.
You don't think you have the time? I know I wouldn't be able to do it. It's just, it would be impossible for me, so.
Do you and Walter want a tag team?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering whether or not we could do that. We could do a tag team thing here.
Yeah, I, I think probably not, because I think with this, it's going to
You guys, from what I hear, you guys think right along the same lines from, from what I was hearing last night. You guys agree with each other on a lot of these things.
Well, I'm not sure if this complicates things or not. I mean, I'll be participating as my schedule
It's non-voting, it's non-voting, so it's, it's only input.
You know, so, John, I mean, I can keep the board up to date if you miss a meeting and keep you up to date. I mean, so, you know, I expect to participate, although I think I have a conflict. I may have a conflict with the first meeting next week myself.
See, we, we have Joyce Terry on Conservation that would like to do it, and I would like to offer her name up, but I'm not sure if she can make the daytime meetings, so.
Are they daytime? There's no way I can do it.
Yeah.
They're all day.
There's no way I can do it.
Has that, has that been decided? I hadn't really
Well, I thought that the, the idea of morning meetings was out of the question. I thought that that was something that almost no one can make.
They mentioned mornings or afternoons, right?
Yeah, that's what I was told, too.
My personal guess is it's probably not going to be more than a meeting or two. I don't think it's going to go much of anywhere myself. And Jack could try to get them to hustle in to meet this month, and the developers said I really aren't available until sometime in July, so there's no big rush on his part, so I really can't figure out what's going on. But I guess he's, he's going to want a zoning change and not an overlay. As we talked about, the zoning change means there's no time limits. He can build a residential and run and never do the commercial and assisted living. So I think if you tell him that we want some type of an overlay district with deadlines and components, he's not going to accept. That's my guess.
And also that, the point that you raised, I was saying about, about 10% affordable, that maybe scare him away, well, just alone.
Yeah, yeah. And to buy the land and to put in the millions to do the hazardous and then get started. And he only builds high-end residential density, so I'm not sure. He, he's going to sub out the commercial and the assisted living. We're going to find people that want to commit, because he has to pass on that land within a few years. So I just don't, I think his intentions are different than ours. I'm not sure if he's going to be as collaborative as we hope he is, but I could be wrong.
Certainly, that was his intention early on when he came up here. Certainly, that was his intention early on when he came up here two, three years ago.
Right, so, I don't know.
Well, and I understand the urgency of this particular project, but there's an opportunity here for this committee to address some, we obviously have some needs to improve some of our zoning bylaws, and if we could still target fall, I mean, this should be something that we're looking at the end game here, not just this immediate need. I think that, I think if we're only focusing on Southwood and then there's no need for this committee, we're missing, kind of missing the big picture of our needs for zoning right now.
Well, we have these discussions, I mean, and there's some discussions about other working groups, but the timetable on this one is different than the other one, so there's nothing, this, this action doesn't preclude the other things from being done, so
I think they're separate.
I certainly don't want to feel as though this, this precludes anybody from meeting and addressing other zoning requirements.
Aren't they going to put together a new zoning bylaw study committee and pick folks and have that start to run along with Ray and change the zoning?
They just decided that, that committee doesn't have the authority to do that? Isn't that what we just said?
Well, I guess the committee has the authority to, to bring things forward to the planning board and the selectmen, but do the homework, I, that's what I gather.
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, the only thing I'm saying is there is a working group separate from the zoning bylaw study committee that is going to be empowered to bring recommendations, and those recommendations may or may not work for the developer. They need to work for the town, but they may not work for the developer, and so the whole thing may go away, as John suggests. I think there's a good chance that that will happen, but this in no way precludes other activities related from zoning to take place, so if that's in interest of yours, Michelle, I mean, I would suggest that, you know, you participate as a zoning bylaw study committee member, perhaps, if you can't participate in this group. I would support that.
This group is probably going to go on longer, because there's another huge project planned off of Laurent Street, and I've already been involved in one informal meeting with the developer and a few other folks in town, and they're talking either a friendly or unfriendly 40B with 170 or so homes, two and three bedroom, 2,000 foot homes on a small parcel of land on the only billable part of Buckley Man, so that probably is going to come right on the suretyals of this project, or they may come together. So, in that regard, it could end up being a much longer committee, you know? These two projects are definitely going
I mean, that would go, if, if they wanted to come in with a 40B though, that, that just goes straight to the zoning board.
But he wants to do both ways. He wants to work with the town and file a 40B at the same time to, to quote him, to cover his base, which I told him was kind of a, a double-edged sword, you don't want to give out too much information and compromise when he's using a state act to circumvent that, so. You'll be back in time for that, Walter.
Well
So, I mean, you can talk zoning bylaw study committee separately if you're looking for, you know, a resource
I think that's definitely separate.
Yeah, a representative from this, from this board.
Yeah, we can put that off until July 8th, but this one has to start fairly quickly.
Right.
So, you're probably going to be involved through the Board of Selectmen with this group, right? So, we really should have a representative, and is it possible, I, I, it, I don't think that it really matters, since it's a non-voting group.
Right.
Can we have a floating representative, a single representative at each meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't see why
Lose the continuity of the, of the discussions.
Well, there is continuity, but, you know
It's better than no representative.
Right, it's better than nothing.
Right. I don't think anybody would say it's, that's worse than having none at all.
Right.
So, could you possibly pick it up if it's
Covering to
To cover before Walter gets back? If, if it's possible?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
On one condition.
And what's that? Do you not have to do the, the meeting minutes?
Tell me my name.
(laughing) Well, it's John.
There you go, all right, I'll do it.
Jack, Jack!
I'll do it. I'll do it.
All right, you want me to pick it up from, from John?
When you get back, you guys can have it, have a conversation between the two of you.
We'll have a cup of coffee somewhere and talk about what happened.
I'll make you sangria.
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 And we can look at this, we can look at the fence.
Look at the fence.
It isn't there.
You can talk about the fence.
And I'll listen and learn, and teach you how to swim.
I'm a very poor swimmer, growing up on the projects.
I'll throw you in.
You don't want to see me in a pool.
I just buy those big boats. I just sit and read.
My granddaughter actually is home there.
All right, so we're done?
Pool club swim team.
Let's see what else we got on here.
We're done.
I'll choose correspond to your question.
I missed the last meeting. What was the outcome as far as the other tower, the other antenna, in term, in terms of the, the final landscaping? Were they going to do planting? Are they planting?
Yeah, yeah, we got a, a complete schedule. Betsy got it, for the, for the tower at the top of the hill.
I did, I forget what they said now.
Yeah, they, they, they had a complete schedule that they submitted to us.
And we love the flag.
Yeah, and we love the flag.
Did we, did we figure out what they were going to
They had three plants that there were trees they're going to be installing, what they were, I don't remember.
Three types or three?
Types, three types of trees. Three types of trees, there were 28 trees that were going in.
Okay, okay.
In
Bushes or what, actually?
We had talked to them about maybe even trying to clump them so that they look a little
More natural.
You been up there to look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It's beautiful. So they, they haven't planted the trees yet, though, right?
Not yet.
Okay.
They should have been in by now, it's starting to get to be a little late.
Yeah, well, they, they'll fall.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
No vouchers, huh?